Good evening. My name is Brandon Monk and I'm the Chairman of the Frederick County School Board. I'd like to call our meeting to order this evening on Tuesday, March 1st at 6:00 PM. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. All right. We have an agenda before us. Our next item is the approval of that agenda. What's the pleasure of the Board?
I move to approve the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion. A motion and second to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote on the agenda before us. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We have an agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the County School Board of Frederick County, Virginia, enter a closed session meeting for the following: to consult with legal counsel regarding pending litigation when such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the litigation posture, litigating posture of the school board; as well as to consult with legal counsel regarding related legal matters that require the provision of legal advice pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711 A7 and A8; and to review and discuss individual personnel matters including appointments, resignations, a leave of absence, and substitutes pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711 A1. And I do so move.
Motion's been made to go in closed session. Is there a second? Motion's been properly seconded that we move into closed session for the reasons Mr. Comstock mentioned. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? All right. We'll be in closed session until approximately 7:00 PM.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Comstock.
I move that the board reconvene from closed session.
All right, we have a motion to reconvene. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded that we reconvene from closed session. Seeing no discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of reconvening signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
I move that, to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were discussed in the closed session, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board.
Great, and we'll move to a vote on that, and to help out Ms. Camery, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Lake?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Comstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, and...
And, Mr. Chairman, I move that the board recess until 7:00 p.m.
Motion's made that we recess until 7:00 p.m. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's made and properly seconded that we recess until 7:00 p.m. and come back at the announced time of 7:00 p.m. for our open meeting. Any discussion about that? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of recessing until 7:00 p.m., signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are in recess.
I move that the board reconvene its meeting.
All right, a motion's been made that we can reconvene the meeting. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second that we reconvene the meeting, seeing no discussion, proceed to vote, all in favor of doing so, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Wonderful.
Mr. Chairman, coming out of closed session, we have one motion, I move to approve the personnel actions as recommended by the superintendent.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been properly seconded to approve the personnel actions as recommended by the superintendent. Seeing no discussion, all in favor of doing so, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, those actions are approved. All right. Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance, please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Had a conversation in the past few meetings, I'd like to thank everyone who's joined us for this evening's meeting in the boardroom, in the overflow area at James Wood Middle School auditorium, and through the livestream on the school division's YouTube channel. Unfortunately, the restrooms at the administrative building aren't available for use this evening due to construction. Those who need to use the restroom may utilize the facilities outside the door to my right, or use the restrooms at James Wood Middle School. To use the restrooms at the school, you should enter through the school, enter the school through the doors next to the cafeteria, under the canopy at the parent pickup drop-off area. The restrooms located in the front hallway of the school are available for you. Apologize for any inconvenience, and again, please see staff if you have any concerns around that. I also wanted to share that Dr. Savine is participating in tonight's meeting remotely, via phone this evening. With that, the next item on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded that we approve the Consent Agenda before us. Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor of the Consent Agenda before us, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Now we're at the portion for citizen and staff comments. The Frederick County School Board is pleased to receive public comments at each monthly meeting. In order to allow the board sufficient time for its other business time, total time allotted for public comment will generally be limited to 20 minutes. Individuals speaking to the board will be allotted three minutes. Those individuals representing groups, organizations, will be allotted five minutes with one representative per group. Upon recognition by the chair, the speaker should clearly state his or her name, residing district, and the subject of their comments. All comments are to be addressed to the chair. The board will receive comments but will not respond to questions or engage in any dialogue. This is an opportunity to be heard, and the board will be committed to showing, excuse me, refer any questions or issues to staff and appropriate committees. The school board is committed to showing appropriate respect and courtesy to all citizens and speakers, and we expect that you would show that appropriate respect and courtesy in return to the board. Members of the audience are not permitted to interrupt the speaker or meeting by asking questions or making comments. School board meetings are taped, recorded for the purpose of clarification, development of official minutes. We will also not be yielding time to others, so if it's your time to speak, then we'll have you speak at that time. With that shared, our first speaker is Tiffany Chapman. If you could come forward, state your name, magisterial district, and allow me your comments to three minutes or less, please, thank you.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Tiffany Chapman, I'm from the Opeckin district. I just wanted to come tonight to express my disappointment in our community's attacks on Dr. Savine. Over the last few weeks, I've watched these school board meetings as people from our community, some who don't even have children in our school district, have gotten up and said things that are just not true. I'm hoping that there's something that you can do to stop these senseless attacks on Dr. Savine. I've been a resident of Frederick County for most of my life, over 30 years. I have two kids that have graduated from Charando, and one currently at Bass Hoover. Most of the years I've lived in Frederick County, I had the same relationship with the school district that most parents have. You send your kid to school, you have parent-teacher conferences, and homework. However, over the past three years, I've had the great privilege of working here in the school board office. Every day, I learn something new that our district offers our children, the children of this community. We support a great deal of needs here in this community. Every day, I get to see what we spend our money on, what it's used for, and it's only for supporting the needs of our children. Any one of the people who stand up here that would take the time to really get to know what happens in this school division would not stand up here and ask you for Dr. Savine's resignation. They would not ask you to reduce the budget. I hope that you can see that we currently have a great leader in Dr. Savine, and we'll stand with him and keep the school division moving in the right direction. Our children deserve adequate funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Rob Mullins.
My name is Rob Mullins, Chairman Monk and the Frederick County School Board, thank you for this time to speak this evening. This is my third year teaching at Dal J. Howard
I move that the board reconvene its meeting.
All right, a motion's been made that we can reconvene the meeting. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in the second that we reconvene the meeting, seeing no discussion, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor of doing so, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Wonderful.
Mr. Chairman, coming out of closed session, we have one motion, I move to approve the personnel actions as recommended by the superintendent.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been properly seconded to approve the personnel actions as recommended by the superintendent. Seeing no discussion, all in favor of doing so, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, those actions are approved. All right. Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance, please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Had a conversation the past few meetings, I'd like to thank everyone who's joined us for this evening's meeting in the boardroom, in the overflow area at James Wood Middle School auditorium, and through the live stream on the school division's YouTube channel. Unfortunately, the restrooms at the administrative building aren't available for use this evening due to construction, those who need to use the restroom may utilize the facilities outside the door to my right, or use the restrooms at James Wood Middle School. To use the restrooms at the school, you should enter through the school, enter the school through the doors next to the cafeteria, under the canopy at the parent pickup drop-off area. The restrooms located in the front hallway of the school are available for you. Apologize for any inconvenience, and again, police and staff, if you have any concerns around that. I also wanted to share that Dr. Savine is participating in tonight's meeting remotely via phone this evening. With that, the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded that we approve the consent agenda before us. Discussion, seeing none, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor of the consent agenda before us, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Now we're at the portion for citizen and staff comments. The Frederick County School Board is pleased to receive public comments at each monthly meeting. In order to allow the board sufficient time for its other business time, total time allotted for public comment will generally be limited to 20 minutes. Individuals speaking to the board will be allotted three minutes, those individuals representing groups or organizations will be allotted five minutes with one representative per group. Upon recognition by the chair, the speaker should clearly state his or her name, residing district, and the subject of their comments. All comments are to be addressed to the chair. The board will receive comments but will not respond to questions or engage in any dialogue. This is an opportunity to be heard, and the board will be committed to showing, excuse me, refer any questions or issues to staff and appropriate committees. The school board is committed to showing appropriate respect and courtesy to all citizens and speakers, and we expect that you would show that appropriate respect and courtesy in return to the board. Members of the audience are not permitted to interrupt the speaker or meeting by asking questions or making comments. School board meetings are taped recorded for the purpose of clarification, development of official minutes. We will also not be yielding time to others, so if it's your time to speak, then we'll have you speak at that time. With that shared, our first speaker is Tiffany Chapman. If you could come forward, state your name, magisterial district, and limit your comments to three minutes or less, please, thank you.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Tiffany Chapman, I'm from the Opeckin district. I just wanted to come tonight to express my disappointment in our community's attacks on Dr. Savine. Over the last few weeks, I've watched these school board meetings as people from our community, some who don't even have children in our school district, have gotten up and said things that are just not true. I'm hoping that there's something that you can do to stop these senseless attacks on Dr. Savine. I've been a resident of Frederick County for most of my life, over 30 years. I have two kids that have graduated from Charando and one currently at Bass Hoover. Most of the years I've lived in Frederick County, I had the same relationship with the school district that most parents have. You send your kid to school, you have parent-teacher conferences and homework. However, over the past three years, I've had the great privilege of working here in the school board office. Every day, I learn something new that our district offers our children, the children of this community. We support a great deal of needs here in this community. Every day, I get to see what we spend our money on, what it's used for, and it's only for supporting the needs of our children. Any one of the people who stand up here that would take the time to really get to know what happens in this school division would not stand up here and ask you for Dr. Savine's resignation. They would not ask you to reduce the budget. I hope that you can see that we currently have a great leader in Dr. Savine, and we'll stand with him and keep the school division moving in the right direction. Our children deserve adequate funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Rob Mullins.
My name is Rob Mullins, Chairman Monk and the Frederick County School Board, thank you for this time to speak this evening. This is my third year teaching at Dal J. Howard CTE Center and my 32nd year as a public school teacher. As we emerge from a pandemic, I have one thing to say to you, Dr. Savine, and the Frederick County School Leadership Team. Thank you. The past two years, you've navigated through uncharted waters and dealt with a lot of things. Shifting environment things, the staffing thing, mobilizing your central office staff to do unfamiliar task things, the maneuvering through the political pressures thing, but through it all, you kept the main thing the main thing. And the main thing is educating the students of Frederick County. It is said that a leader is powerful to the extent he empowers others. Dr. Savine, you are a powerful leader. By reducing class sizes and deploying the hybrid model during a crucial time, Frederick County was one of the very few school systems that kept students in school and face-to-face with their teachers as much as possible. And of course, the mask thing. You did your absolute best to empower me, the student's teacher, to be one, to be the one in front, beside, and behind my students. Dr. Savine and the Frederick County School Leadership Team, thank you for a job well done.
Next speaker will be Jill Savery.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Jill Savery, I'm a resident of the Opeckin district, a property owner in the Back Creek district. I'm the art teacher at Orchard View Elementary School and a parent of Frederick County Public Schools. I want to thank Dr. Savine and all those who advocate for more funding for our district. Our students are recovering from some of the most challenging years, and I'm going to cry, I'm sorry, of most challenging years of public education, and deserve adequate support to recover from the most ridiculous years of public education I can remember. And those supports look like more adults to care, more highly-trained mental health professionals to listen, and more teacher autonomy to create learning experiences that are relevant to our students and our community. I'd like to share with you what support at school has meant to me in my lifetime. School was always a place where I found a lot of support in my life. My dad struggled with substance abuse for the majority of his life, so my younger sister, my mother and I dealt with things that you deal with when you have someone who is addicted to drugs. We dealt with violence, police restraining orders, counseling, relapse, severe illness, and mourning. My father passed away when I was 14, my sister was 11. I've always been someone who's very good at school. I listen really well, I take really good notes, and my sister is not that person. She is undiagnosed ADHD, to this day, she knows that she has it, but when you're an adult, it's expensive to get diagnosed. And during those times in our life that were really hard, we lived in one of the most fastest-growing cities in the country, Gilbert, Arizona. Our class sizes in elementary school were between 28 and 32. The majority of my time in Arizona in elementary school, my class sizes were 32, my sisters were as well. When I went into junior high and high school, I was fortunate enough to be in lower class sizes because I was identified as gifted. My sister was always in trouble because she has ADHD and can't sit still. So she was always in trouble, and she turned to kids who were also always in trouble. By the time we got into high school, we both developed mental health issues. The difference was, my teachers knew who I was because I had 18 kids in my class. My sister, her freshman year in English, she had 40 children in her class, 40. And I know that that sounds crazy to us, it is not crazy in places that are growing as fast as Gilbert, Arizona, which could be us someday. So my mental health issues were supported by my teachers. My sister's mental health issues were not. So when we're talking about funding our schools and we're talking about overcrowding, we have to listen. These kids deserve to be known, they deserve to be heard, and they deserve to feel valued. Our kids deserve adequate funding and staffing in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Savery. Our next speaker is Tiffany Brozak.
Good evening, Chairman Monk and members of the board. My name is Tiffany Brozak, and I'm a resident of the Opeckin district. I'm here today as both a teacher and a parent. I teach kindergarten at Orchard View Elementary School, where I've been for the past 16 years. Both of my children also attend Orchard View Elementary School, and I'm grateful for the education that they've received there. Orchard View is truly a special place, and I believe that Frederick County is a very special division as well, in part by the work of Dr. Savine, the work of you, the work of the teachers and the community together. So I'm in full support of the budget proposed by Dr. Savine. In particular, I'd like to discuss the proposal to bring full-day kindergarten paraprofessionals to the kindergarten classrooms. Kindergarten, you might have heard the joke that kindergarten is like herding cats. It's not a joke, it's true. Kindergarten is very different today than it was when we were in school. It's different than when I started teaching 16 years ago, even 10 years ago. The pace is faster, the expectations are a lot harder and a lot higher. So, you know, unfortunately, due to a variety of circumstances, students don't always enter school kindergarten-ready. Research has shown us time and time again that this is a very critical time to close that gap, and if students are still struggling to read by the end of first grade, they will more likely remain poor readers forever. The research has shown that over and over. Devoting resources to kindergarten programs and to the pre-K programs as well is an investment that will pay off. Students benefit greatly from the additional instruction and practice that they receive with a paraprofessional. They're not just another pair of hands, but rather they provide valuable support and instruction to meet the need of our students. One other thing that I really wanted to touch base on, as a mom, as a teacher, I wanted to look into the concerns that have been brought up about the textbooks that we're using with our language arts program in the elementary school. My son was in fourth grade last year, and I hoard everything, so we still have this fourth grade, my book. And I know that one has come into the spotlight in particular, so I read it cover to cover. And I know that there have been some talks, that maybe there are some things that are divisive or problematic within that book. Reading it, there's nothing divisive or problematic in any of these stories. It's filled with very high-quality literary works by very respected authors, and many, but not all, are authors of color. Diverse books are often underrepresented in our classroom libraries, and one of the things that I loved when we adopted the HMH program was the diversity of the stories. So actually, I spoke to the English language teacher at our school today, and she was talking about how when we adopted it, like she just felt the kids light up. They just love when they have stories about their culture that they can connect to. So it's inevitable that when reading these stories by diverse authors, we're going to come across some instances of prejudice. That's because art reflects life, and sadly, that's the reality for many individuals. Students are asked to think critically and put themselves in the character's shoes. This is not creating division, it is teaching empathy. Representation matters, and we cannot claim to value students from all cultures if we are censoring stories based on our own comfort. We must prioritize the education and well-being of students over the comfort of adults. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Laura Gerrell.
Good evening, my name is Laura Gerrell, and I'm a resident of the Opeckin district. I have three children who attend Frederick County Public Schools, and I'm also an employee. I have been accused by some of being a mouthpiece for certain school board members because I'm an employee, or that I'm part of some conspiracy, or that by being an employee that somehow makes me an unreliable voice. That could not be further from the truth. Before I'm an employee of Frederick County Public Schools, I'm a mom. Even before working for Frederick County Public Schools, I have been an avid proponent of public education. So I'm standing here tonight as a concerned parent who cares about my children continuing to receive the excellent education they have so far in this county. My children have excelled because of the leadership of our public schools and because of amazing teachers who have gone above and beyond what is required of them. Because of this, I wanted to take a couple of moments to talk about Dr. Savine's proposed FY23 budget. Faced with so many priorities, Dr. Savine has focused his budget on what is truly the foundation of our excellent public schools, the staff. Staff and teachers have always worked hard, but they have worked tirelessly over these past two years to ensure our students get the best possible education they could, under circumstances none of us could have ever predicted. While the Board of Supervisors threaten cuts of unbelievable proportions, as well as threatening to pull funding away from our public schools and invest into private schools, I urge you to work with the supervisor in your district to help them understand the critical role public schools play in our community and the importance of fully funding the school's proposed budget. Education is not a political issue. It's a duty we have to our children to prepare them for their future. We are here and we aren't going anywhere. We are prepared to stand and fight for what is right. Parents are not only counting on you to do the right thing, but we are counting on you to do your part to educate your fellow supervisor on the role they play in our children's future. Our children deserve adequate funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marie O'Connor.
Good evening, my name is Marie O'Connor, and I'm a resident of the Back Creek district. I am here first and foremost as a parent. My husband and I have three sons who all attend Frederick County Public Schools. Our oldest is in fifth grade, our middle son is in second grade, and our youngest is in kindergarten. We look forward to many years being a part of the FCPS community. We moved from Pittsburgh to Winchester in the summer of 2019 to be closer to my family. My husband and I value education. When we moved, we had extremely high expectations for Frederick County Public Schools because the school district where we lived in Pittsburgh was consistently ranked as one of the best in the state and the country. All of our expectations have been exceeded, and we could not be happier with the education our boys are receiving. Every year, they have had teachers who know them, who challenge them, and most importantly, who love them. Our boys will eventually attend James Wood Middle School and Charando High School. We are extremely concerned about the overcrowding, especially at Charando High School. We see a huge safety risk in the number of trailers in use at the school, and now with the fourth high school being removed from the county's SIP plan, the likelihood of relieving overcrowding anytime soon is not looking good. I'm also here tonight as a teacher. I am a first-grade teacher at Orchard View Elementary School, and this is my third year in that position. Before moving to Virginia, I taught kindergarten for many years in Pittsburgh. I fully support the budget proposed by Dr. Savine. Our students deserve the best education possible, and that comes at a cost. I have researched the budgets of divisions similar in size to Frederick County throughout the state. Divisions like Roanoke County and Albemarle County have very similar budgets to what Dr. Savine has proposed. To me, this proves that the budget is not only necessary, but also in line with what others around the state are doing. To the school board, I first thank you for your support of our students, and I ask you to provide as much transparency as possible when it comes to the running of our school division and to the budget. We have nothing to hide, quite the opposite. Teachers and students are doing amazing things every single day, and we want to share that with our community. Parents want and need to be involved in their child's education, and we should support that. I know that many future funding decisions lie with the Board of Supervisors. I encourage the school board to present the budget as a unified front to our supervisors, and I encourage all parents and community members to please reach out to the Board of Supervisors in support of our schools. We need to encourage an open, respectful dialogue of our school division, because if we all work together, we can and will create a school community where authentic learning truly inspires all students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rachel Rinker.
Good evening, my name is Rachel Rinker, and I'm a resident of the Back Creek district. I've been blessed with a job in Frederick County Public Schools for 11 years at the elementary level. Throughout this time, I have encountered the most loving, kind, hard-working, and well-intentioned people that I have ever met. Dr. Savine, Dr. Angelo, Mr. Bach, and members of the board, thank you for giving me a chance to share my thoughts with you, specifically regarding the issues that I have seen or experienced in my career in FCPS and my own personal fears. Early on in my career, our youngest and often neediest learners were only receiving a half-day of kindergarten. Thank you, Dr. Savine, for working hard to make sure all kindergarten students received a full day of learning and for making sure that pre-kindergarten programs were available for our students. As a young teacher in the division who strongly preferred mathematics, I struggled with language arts instruction. Thank you, Dr. Savine, for implementing a balanced literacy program and for pushing for instructional coaches to help not only myself, but my colleagues and peers to improve their teaching practices. This specifically helped me as I later became an instructional coach myself. Now, as an administrator in the division, I've had the chance to work with thousands of students and hundreds of teachers, and being an instructional coach was invaluable in my preparation. As a teacher leader in the division, I've witnessed many antiquated teaching practices that have led to a lack of engagement. Thank you, Dr. Savine, for helping to craft Inspire 2025 and the vision of authentic and engaging learning experiences, and for giving teachers the autonomy to make choices for their students. Thank you, Dr. Savine, for always advocating for teacher salaries. This job is tough, and teachers deserve it. As a principal during the pandemic, I can't overstate how grateful I am for the support of Dr. Savine, Dr. Angelo, and Mr. Bach, and thank them for having faith in me and trusting me to do what's best for students, teachers, and families. No matter what job you have, you know that most people quit bosses, not jobs. A good boss can make or break any job. Dr. Savine, I'm here in Frederick County because I believe in your vision for our future, our students, and I believe in you. I believe in the teachers of this division. I wish I could crystallize for the public the beautiful things I see each day. A patient teacher helping a child to cope with their own big feelings, the excitement in a teacher's voice while reading aloud to students, and I wish I could materialize the heartache that comes in this field, the secondhand trauma that teachers and administrators carry from students who come to us with histories of abuse and neglect, children that don't have enough to eat or haven't slept. I wish I could count the numbers of dollars that come from teachers' pockets to make sure they have what they need each day. I wish I could bottle up the feelings that I have and share them with you. Our days don't end at 3:30. We take this home with us to our own families, and we do so willingly because we love kids, and we do it here in Frederick County because of you, Dr. Savine, Dr. Angelo, and Mr. Bach, and the community and family you've created here. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to be all that we can be for kids, and thank you for giving me a chance to share my story. Today, I hope I modeled for my students, my teachers, and my own two children that fear is not a reason to stay quiet. I was scared to stand here today, but we should never be afraid to speak the truth. And the truth is that I stand here today in steadfast support of Dr. Savine and Frederick County Public Schools, and my greatest fear would be to figure all of this out without them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Nelson. Our next speaker is John Nelson.
Mr. Chairman, board members, my name is John Nelson, and I reside in the Opeckin district. As I near the end of my 39th career in public education, all with Frederick County Public Schools, I'm reminded of the outstanding educators that I have worked with over the years. I've had the privilege of working with five superintendents, Dr. Kenneth Walker, Mr. Tom Malcolm, Dr. William Dean, Mrs. Taylor, and now, Dr. Savine. While all these superintendents had different leadership styles, they all kept their focus on what's best for students of Frederick County Public Schools. Dr. Savine has a passion for education and seeking students succeed. You can visit our website and read all the accolade and accomplishments that he has made as superintendent of Frederick County Public Schools. Well, one accomplishment sticks out in my mind as his caring and passion devotion to our students when he developed the Bright Futures program. Today, we serve over 1,000 meals to the weekends for our students, and this has been taking place over many, many years. It also never missed a beat during our pandemic. But one of the strongest characteristics of Dr. Savine that I've learned over the years is his ability to build relationships with students, staff, and parents. Dr. Savine takes his time out of a busy day to visit a school, to congratulate a student that may have won a specific award. He attends all of our programs to support our students and our athletes. He even will make a special trip to our schools to support our teachers as they win their awards, too. That tells us a personal touch with and about Dr. Savine. In closing, I would just like to say that Dr. Savine is an outstanding superintendent, he's a better human being. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sonia Marfatia Gude. Apologies.
Good evening, my name is Sonia Marfatia Gude, and I'm a resident of Back Creek district. Just to give you some background on our family, I am a product of public schools. I've moved around attending elementary, middle, and high schools in Delaware, Illinois, and Virginia. I received my undergraduate degree and master's degree at VCU. My husband is a product of public schools. He is a son of an Army veteran, a member of the National Guard, and has attended VCU for his bachelor's and medical degree. We support public schools. Two of our three girls attend Frederick County Public Schools, and our third will attend when it's her time for kindergarten. We love the teachers at our girls' school. They are so happy to be in school with their friends, and every day, they come home excited about what they learned that day. But our teachers are stretched thin. These past few years have done a number on us as a community. Now, more than ever, we need to support our teachers and administrators at Frederick County Public Schools. Our community is growing. More neighborhood developments are being built in the county, you can't deny it. Our classrooms are overcrowded. Student enrollment is increasing. We need more teacher positions. We need to retain quality teachers. We need to expand our pre-K We need to expand our pre-K program. Our Board of Supervisors is on record yet again demanding large cuts to our budget. What happens to programs like CTE? Electives like sports, band, chorus, art? These enrichment programs will be casualties of these sweeping budget cuts. We need to support Dr. Savine and his budget. An educated society benefits us all. Regardless of whether you have kids in our county's public schools, past or present, you should want the same. And if you are elected to the school board, you should be thinking of what is best for the kids attending Frederick County Public Schools. Our children deserve adequate funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amy Williams.
Good evening, Board. Amy Williams from the Opecan District. I'm here tonight to request that all board members support the proposed budget, especially in the area of staffing and compensation. We must provide necessary funding to the heart of the school system, which is our teachers, aides, and principals, the ones who pour hours of knowledge and love into our children. Education has changed over the years because the needs of our children have changed, whether it's a learning difference, developmental delay, or intellectual disability. They require more in order to be successful, and our schools must be able to adapt and meet those needs. To reiterate data from Angie White at the last meeting, the early childhood supervisor for our system, 16% to 19% of students enter kindergarten not ready for math, lacking self-regulation skills, and not meeting the early literacy benchmark. Not all kindergartners have had the opportunity for a pre-K learning experience. With a full-time assistant in each kindergarten class, imagine how many kids with special needs could be identified and not fall through the cracks and receive access to supports in a timely and efficient manner. No matter what happens with this budget, the 20 kindergarten aides must stay in order for our children to be successful. Out of the 14,027 students in our system, 1,938 of those received special education services, including my son. That's almost 14%, and an increase of 89% from the prior year. If you are a school board member and you don't understand the complexities that go into a 504 plan or an IEP for students with disabilities, I encourage you to reach out to a special ed teacher. They are more than willing to talk to you about their needs. They are doing a job that should actually be done by two teachers, as that is requirement in some states. Not only do they implement the IEP and provide individualized instruction in a one-to-one or very small group setting, they gather and analyze data to determine if goals are being met and adjust the plan as needed, conduct meetings with the IEP team and parents. Some students require one-to-one aides, and as I was told by a special ed teacher at my son's school, "It might be difficult to provide a one-to-one paraprofessional for a student with behaviors or academic needs because we simply don't have the manpower." She also stated, "Teachers and students alike are being put between a rock and a hard spot because we don't have enough staff and resources to support them." The special ed field continues to experience teacher shortages. The FCPS job site shows we have 12 open positions for special ed teachers and special ed assistants, special education assistants. It is critical that you approve the special education pay differential. This will attract and retain highly educated teachers as well as assistants and encourage general education teachers to obtain special ed certifications so that FCPS can continue to provide unique learning experiences for our most vulnerable student population. Our children deserve adequate funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jodi Yegi.
Hi, my name is Jodi Yegi, and I'm a member of the Redbug District. Public schools are the heart of a community. Businesses in the community count on a strong public school system. A strong public school system only exists with strong leadership and appropriate funding. As a member of the Board of Ed, I encourage you to not only vote for the proposed superintendent's budget, but also advocate for full funding with our Board of Supervisors. There have been suggestions by some supervisors to drastically cut the funding. Such significant cuts would impede the district's ability to provide all of the extras: the sports, the CTE programs, drama, band, FFA. The list goes on and on. These are essential for our students. So please use your vote tonight to put forth the much-needed budget and use your voice and your platform to advocate for our students. Our children deserve adequate funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Braithwaite.
Mr. Chair, I'm coming to you tonight in speaking for the group of the Frederick County Fighters for Freedom, so I respectfully submit, thank you. You got me, ma'am. All right. I think it's kind of ironic that we're talking about funding for special education when there were students in this school district with IEPs, 504 plans, who were completely denied educational opportunities under this mask mandate problem that we had. And that stuff has not been addressed correctly yet. And I would hope that somebody would get this situation settled so we don't have to go about it. And I'm really starting to wonder if some of you folks are for real. The superintendent is discussing a budget that's in the millions of dollars, yet after five weeks, all these educated people in this school system and this board have not shown the collective ability to secure a restroom in this building. Now, come on. I've worked in security for 38 years. I understand how important security is. But, folks, it does not take five weeks to figure out how to take care of a toilet. It doesn't. It's that simple. And it doesn't really instill an abundance of competence in your collective abilities. There's even bigger problems because this shows the adversarial relationship here, folks. You guys, to have a security issue, you have to have a security threat. All these folks in this room are a threat to you guys because that's what you're having. So you're demonstrating how you feel about the parents and concerned people in this room when you consider them a security threat. Let's go ahead and consider for a second school tax, from the terrorist attacks in Russia and Beslan to the active shooters in Sandy Hook and the recent incident in Oxford, Michigan. What are these similarities? Well, first of all, none of them were committed by parents. Second of all, they were not in school administration buildings. There are no students here, so what's all the security about? I'm not going to talk about the devices around here because I don't want to be accused of doxing your security things. But it doesn't take a genius to see all the stuff around here, folks. It doesn't. And the process we go through this building? That's psychological operations. I know real security versus psychological security, and it's nothing new. What you guys, it's the same thing that farmers do. The more you handle cows, the more complacent they become. There's no reason to be stopping five people at a time in this foyer. There's no screening going on. You're confining movement. And then you add that to making us walk 100 yards to use a restroom or jet outside for 20 degrees in a portageon. You know, that's really great for the folks that are paying for this building. All of our tax money goes paying for this building. And I'll be quite honest with you. When it comes to funding, I suspect the Board of Supervisors would be more respective or more receptive if the superintendent and the member-at-large would account for their lawless activities. It's not really helpful to your case. And the recent discoveries that employees of this school system are allowed to work under assumed names is no less distressing. There's actually concern that Virginia Code 59.1-69 may have been ignored in this matter, only adding to a lawless appearance of the day-to-day operations of the school system. It really should raise some eyebrows among some parents. And it's a shame on a school board that allows it to continue. Apparently, the security of this administration is a big concern, but yet, the common sense security for our children is a different matter altogether. So, coming to account for your actions, Mr. Hester, Dr. Savine, might gain you more traction than Dr. Savine's attempts to play Facebook fact-checker. Or perhaps, you're getting ready for your post-Frederick County career. Dr. Savine feels no need to account for his actions, setting a terrible example for our children. I'm sure someone will run to his defense, "Oh, he can't talk about that because that's litigation." The lawsuit's not the matter here. The fact that he ran from a process server is. The fact that he doesn't recognize the authority of the Circuit Court of Frederick County matters. So, the at-large member? Well, he's pretty useless because he remains unaccountable himself. But that'll be rectified either by recall or the next election. So the six members on this board that do represent districts, Dr. Savine is accountable to you directly, and you are accountable to your constituents. As I see your options, you can either entice Dr. Savine to account for his lawless behavior publicly, or you can terminate the most divisive superintendent in the history of Frederick County as many believe his actions in the last six weeks have triggered the dismissal mechanism in his contract. You can resign, or you can wait for your accountability at the polls. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Edward Stenavent.
Evening. Thank you for this opportunity. Edward Stenavent, Back Creek District. I'd planned to do this at the last meeting, but my son, or grandson, came home with COVID while you all were making him wear the masks that were supposed to keep us safe, and he gave me COVID that he got from school, so I didn't get to come here to the last meeting. So I'm going to make the remarks that I was going to make the last time. Mr. Comstock said at the last meeting that I attended, which was the one before the last one, that there was a lot of noise, and it was making it difficult for the board to do their job. So the only thing I can assume is that the noise was the parents that were standing up for their kids. So my assumption is that if you were on Breed's Hill when the British were attacking with the Minutemen and they held off wave after wave, that was just noise. The troops fought at Gettysburg, 56,000 casualties over three days. That was merely just noise. John Basileon holding off the Japanese at Guadalcanal with a machine gun and a .45, that was just noise. We are parents. We are concerned, and we have a right to be concerned. And we're not noise. We're not going anywhere. We're going to be here for a while. And I've watched some of you on this board look down your noses at us with disdain and contempt, and I've read what some of you have written. But we're not going anywhere. We're going to be here for a while. I personally, like I said the first time I came in here, I put four kids through this school system and never once worried about the school board or anything, but you all have given me an education. I'm not really a student of the budget. I don't know what all's in it. But I can tell you that any teacher in this county, the ones that I've had to deal with over the last 30-some years, they've all been awesome, and they need raises. But I don't think we need to give superintendents raises and give them the Midas salary. That's my personal opinion on it. But I've worked for this county for 26 years. I retired at the jail, and there's 200 paid segments of this society, and that's correctional officers, and that's teachers. So if you're going to give the teachers a raise, I'm all for it. But I don't think we should be giving the superintendent the Midas salary that he's getting. So that's all I had to say. But I will let you know that I, like I said at the first meeting, I'm a student of this school board, and I'm going to be here, and I'm going to learn all I can. And when it comes down to election time, I'm going to do all I can to make sure that those people who thumb their noses at the parents do not get reelected. And that's my promise to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Christie Scarborough.
Hello, Board Members. My name is Carl Sagan from the Cosmos District. See, that doesn't really work because you already know that I'm Christie Scarborough from the Stonewalt District. I just thought that since one of the people that sits up here is using a fake name, that I could do it, too. Do any of you know who it is that sits up there that's using a fake name? Mr. Savine, I know you're listening. Now, although it's not you, you are allowing this person to gallivant around using a fake name, which says a lot about you and how transparent you are with the public. Mr. Edwards, Mr. Steve Edwards, you are not here today, but I'm going to talk to you. You owe this entire community an explanation as to why you are using a fake name. I am not sure if there's any truth to this, but I have heard from multiple people that allege Steve Edwards is using the same fake name he used when he worked in radio. If that is true, do I really need to remind you that you don't work in radio anymore? You're a county employee. You are the FOIA officer, the clerk of the school board, and you recently got promoted from Coordinator of Policy and Communications to the Director of Policy and Communications. You guys really gave that guy a promotion? A man who is misleading the public of his true identity? Who else uses fake names in Frederick County Public Schools? Are there any others, or is it just Steve Edwards or Cornwell or whatever it is he claims to be at this time of day? I am here to demand that Steve be required to use his legal last name, Cornwell. If I have to give you all my legal name when I come here to speak or provide my driver's license if I have to pick up my kid so that you know what my name actually is, then Steve needs to stop hiding behind a fake name. The hypocrisy is so thick here that someone could literally choke on it. I expect the board to take action on this ASAP. On the proposed budget, it needs to have the raise for David Savine taken off. David Savine is one of the highest-paid superintendents in the state of Virginia. He even got a bonus this year. David Savine doesn't need a raise. He needs to be fired, and so does Steve Cornwell. I would rather see that $12,000 go to a hard-working teacher in need rather than giving it to a tyrant that no one likes. But hey, that's just me. And, Hester, you can resign at any time, bud. Nobody wants you here.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Rebecca Carter.
Good evening. I'm Rebecca Carter from the Shawnee District. First off, most people in the community still do not know what has happened or is still happening with our children in the schools, especially Millbrook. As you can see, I'm a Millbrook parent. In a little over two weeks, I've had two in-person meetings with the vice principal, sent an email, which I CC'd all board members on, David Savine, the actual principal of Millbrook, and two teachers. And yes, if you remember from the last board meeting, one of the teachers that was included in this email was the teacher that said it was above her pay grade to teach my son. All of this is due to the children not receiving their education while they were segregated. The children that did receive some work was told to figure it out themselves. And that's even if they did receive it. Some of the work that was completed and turned in on the table went mysteriously missing. Our children are being given zeros on the material that the teachers did not teach them. How are they supposed to do the work if they weren't taught? I have been told several times that they were just following directions. Well, who told them this? Who told them the children weren't allowed in the classrooms? I know everything comes from the top, so David Savine is responsible for this. And so is Vernon Brock for sending out the instructions on what the teachers were to do with the children that came in without a mask. But the administration, the teachers, they're not innocent at all in this either. They could have stood up and said, "We are teaching these kids no matter what." Secondly, regarding the email I sent and CC'd everyone on, I want to thank the two board members who did email me back. Of everyone that was on that email, David Savine should have emailed me and should have been the first one. But no, just crickets from him. I do have a few questions of my own and some from the community that I hope you will address either when you have your own time to speak at the end or even send out an email. Where does the money come from for the teachers' raises? Is it from the state, or is it from the county? Why is the raises given to the teachers as across-the-board raises and not based on their performance? Why hasn't the abuse, and yes, I say abuse, that happened to our children while being segregated, especially at Millbrook, been taken care of? What is the exact address of the fourth high school that is supposed to be built? And no, we don't want a description of where it is. We want the exact address. When the school shut down on March 13, 2020, our children were not taught for the remainder of that year. So teachers not teaching, buses not running, schools were not operating daily. Where did the surplus money go? Do you really think by throwing an ungodly amount of money into the schools and at the administrators and teachers is going to fix the education problem here in Frederick County? If CRT isn't being taught in our schools, then what is positive behavior intervention and support? And lastly, the million-dollar question? Why hasn't the board fired David Savine?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kimberly Royalborn. Our next speaker is Kimberly Royalborne.
Good evening, Chairman Monk, members of the board, and Dr. Savine. I want to take a few moments to discuss our brain and our brain's response to things. If I was to show you a picture of something and ask you to tell me what you see, the majority of people in this room would automatically pick out the negative things that are happening. Why is that? It's because of something called negativity bias. I think it comes as no surprise that many in this room are divided because of their beliefs, opinions, and positions on numerous topics. I am positive that we could go down the road this evening and do a roll call and pick out something negative on each person up here. However, what good would that do? None. Instead, it would only continue to bring more division. Board members, you all decided to run for election and are placed on this board because you wanted to make a difference. Therefore, I ask that instead of continuing to look for all of the negative things, that you all come together and begin to work for the students in Frederick County Public Schools. Start thinking about the snowball effect that decisions made tonight, especially on the budget, will have on our students. In a time where there is already a shortage of qualified teachers and staff, will your decision help or hurt the students and staff of Frederick County? I want to take my last few moments to thank Dr. Savine for his leadership. Dr. Savine, you have led us during an unprecedented time and continued to stay calm, open, understanding, and supportive of the students, staff, and families of Frederick County. You, along with your team, have made decisions based on information known at the current time and have done your best to continue to move Frederick County Public Schools forward. I want to thank you for always recognizing the staff for their hard work. I know I will not come close to naming the many positive things that you have done and accomplished under your leadership, but I will try to name just a few. Thank you for your vision and Inspire 2025. You are continuously striving to provide the highest-quality education and meet the needs of all students. Thank you for being a genuine person. Thank you for coming in and talking with our students and acknowledging all staff members, regardless of their title. Thank you for implementing full-day kindergarten and now for the push to provide a kindergarten assistant to each room. Thank you for bringing preschool to Frederick County. Thank you for implementing FCPS 101, the Virginia Tiered Systems of Supports, for building Frederick County Middle School, Ailer Middle School, and renovating Jameswood High School, all to help alleviate overcrowding. In a time where there is so much negativity, let's change the focus and continue to work towards positive outcomes for the students, staff, and families of Frederick County. And I am employee at Apple Pie Ridge Elementary.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Frederiksen. John Frederiksen.
Good evening, Chairman Monk, board members. I'm John Frederiksen. I live in Redbud District, and I moved here to Frederick County six years ago as a retired superintendent of schools. I worked for 34 years in Minnesota and Maryland, know a little bit about the school business. We've got great teachers here. We've got successful students, we've got carried and caring, trained, support staff, we've got responsible professional leaders, we have safe schools, we have clean and well-kept and well-maintained schools, we have up-to-date textbooks and other technology, we have reasonable-length bus routes, we've got high-quality, timely lunches, and you have community support. We've been through a real tough time with this recent pandemic. It's been tough on all of us. In fact, I hate blasted masks. I can take it off, thank you. But if you reduce the budget, you're going to have increased class sizes, you're going to have harder time maintaining the high-performing students that you have right now, because you're going to have reductions in services, whether it's a little bit by a little bit larger class size, or maybe a total removal of a particular activity or service. You're going to have fewer people to help those kids. You're going to have more duties across all the people, and sometimes that pressure's going to be difficult, difficult to maintain those people. Safety in schools, you're probably going to be cutting there just as you would any other place, because you're going to have to make lots of cuts. You're going to have to defend yourself against reducing your standards. You're going to have to make sure that you make the most out of your textbooks, because guess what? They're going to last longer. Your technology's going to be older. Instead of getting three, four, or five years out of a computer, you're going to get five, six, seven years. I don't know about you, but personally, after about three, four years, they start to fade. You're going to have longer bus routes. I don't know about you, but about an hour bus ride, maybe hour and five minutes is about all my rear end can handle. But the kids are going to have longer ones, and guess what? You're going to make adjustments in terms of scheduling buses, because now some kids are going to get out at 6 o'clock or 6:15 in the morning, and the last one's going to get picked up at 10:00 in the morning. I don't know about you, that's an awful long span for trying to figure out what are you going to do for daycare for your child, especially if you live out in the country. You're also going to have lunches done differently. Lunches are going to be changed from, instead of from 11:00 until 1:00, they're probably going to be going from 10:00 until 2:00. And I don't know about you, but at 10:00 in the morning, I may be interested in a snack, but I really want lunch at noon or thereabouts. Well, that's just one of those little problems you're going to be dealing with. And finally, not only are you going to have community backlash, I mean, this mask thing's been horrible for folks, but you're going to have more community backlash on all your areas of quality. You've got a quality system, please keep it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Clay Perry.
Clay Perry, Bat Creek District. You know, lots of family members that served in the school system, as well as family members that are still in the school system. I just want to, first of all, thank the school board for organizing the meeting, especially Chairman Monk for getting the supervisors to meet with the school board, so that you guys actually can talk and work through the details and hash out what the real objections are, and not the objections that get fed down from the administrative office here to the teachers and to the parents, as to, you know, the supervisors hate the schools and want to defund the schools and do all these horrible things, when really they just want accountability in the schools, they want to see what the money's being spent on, such as $50,000 raises that come out of nowhere for David Savine. That's what this is all about, right? And so setting up that meeting, I think it's going to go a long way into ending this divide and getting more transparency in the system. So thank you, first of all, for that. Second of all, I want to clarify, or stances, you know, like I said, I have family members that were teachers, teachers' aides, et cetera, that served in the system, some quit because they gave up on the system and what was coming down from the offices here. But regardless, through it all, teachers are the most important thing. I remember all my teachers, when I went through Frederick County School Systems, one of my teachers became the principal for which my wife taught under, she was an amazing lady, Susan Bott. And so we do have great teachers, and our teachers do deserve raises, and I will definitely restate that over and over again, and that's what's important. Unfortunately, because there's no transparency in our budgets, things are getting spent on other things, and not band and sports and things like that, that that fear that comes down from the administrative offices here that tell our parents, "Oh, we're going to cut sports, we're going to cut band, we're going to cut arts, we're going to cut special education." We do all that to instill fear in the parents and the teachers, when the reality is money's getting spent elsewhere. I mean, for example, Savine could have turned down his $50,000 special raise last year and implemented a system of giving bonuses to 50 teachers throughout the county for those that had performed well, based upon parent review, based upon student review, and based upon peer review. But no, he chose to keep that $50,000 in his pocket. So with regards to that, I'll go one. I sent a superintendent code of conduct to you, since code of conduct seemed to be something important. But the things in it that I want to just highlight was point number two, seven, and eight. Point number two is I know there's a lot of teachers here tonight in support of Savine, but I get so many messages from teachers, because I am active on top of this issue, that are afraid to speak up. They live in fear of David Savine. They don't live in freedom around David Savine. Some of them quit, others just hide in this hope that voices like you see in the room here tonight will speak up on their behalf. I also want to make sure that you realize number eight, which is directed towards David Savine, and it says in number eight, it says, "I will never accept," this is David Savine needing, I'm asking that he sign this, "that I will never accept a raise in a given year that is at a higher rate than the average raise rate given to teachers. If I have previously accepted a raise at a higher rate than teachers, then I will not accept any pay raise going forward until such time as my total raise percent during my tenure is at or below the teacher pay raise for that same time period." And that's what's important here. We've wasted money after money on David Savine. And just real quick, I had some things I mentioned at the last meeting, and since Savine was clarifying misinformation, I would ask that he clarify whether I spoke the truth or whether I lied. I believe I spoke the truth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Our next speaker is Jennifer Fry.
Good evening, members of the board, chairman. As the citizens make their way to the podium, we are asked to state our name and our district. A seemingly relatively easy task, it would seem. My name is Jennifer Fry, Shawnee District. My question and concern is why Stephen Edwards, I mean, Cornwell, or is it Edwards, is not required to use his legal name. This may seem like a relatively minor issue to some, but when transparency is at the center of issues parents are expressing concern, I would call it significant. Mr. Cornwell seemed very concerned at the last meeting over the last name of a parent when he asked Mr. Sevick to come back to the stand and repeat his name after he called for the firing of Mr. Savine. Names seemed important to them then. I would like to thank all the board members who listened to the parents and voted to remove the masks the last meeting. Mr. Monk, I have enjoyed the education of watching how you conduct yourself in the board meetings, you remain kind, compassionate, and listen to all the voices of your board members and community, regardless of their beliefs, and treat each comment with respect, and I applaud you for that. Now, let's play a game of true or false, shall we? The superintendent made a webpage claiming to provide accurate information to enable individuals to form their own opinion. True. The webpage actually provides accurate information that will enable individuals to form their own opinion? False. The webpage provides propaganda that is created to sway public opinion? True. The webpage amounts to nothing more than the equivalent of the Facebook fact-checkers? True. If the new budget is approved, Dr. Savine will get another $12,000 on top of his $246,000 salary and the $25,000 annuity? Also true. Dr. Savine had his contract terminated a year early so he could get a four-year extension before the election of three new board members coming on? True. Dr. Savine should have expired in June of 2022? True. Dr. Savine's new contract and current budget increased his salary from a 2018 base salary of $193,798,000 to his new base salary of $246,318,000, with an additional contractual stipulation allowing for up to $35,000 in additional compensation? Also true. This leaves Dr. Savine with a salary of $281,318,000, which is up more than $87,000 from his 2018. True. Children deserve adequate funding. This is also true. Demanding transparency to ensure funds are being allocated correctly makes you against children in education? False.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Addie Jones.
Good evening, elected board members, Dr. Savine, and community members. I'm a proud resident of the Opeckin District. My spouse and I have owned a home in Frederick County for the last 10 years, and we enjoy many wonderful neighbors, both old and new. Our community is flourishing. We also have two young daughters who benefit from the culminated teaching expertise here and the tireless ways in which their former and current teachers show up, show up for them every day in many, many ways, for their students, my kids, and some of your kids too, our kids. I know that the school board has many decisions to make in the coming weeks and recommendations to be put forth. Will you do everything in your power to support the FCPS administration, faculty, and staff, thereby supporting this community's children? The vast majority of the children in this community are served by these professionals. They are poured into, they are planned for, they are likely even prayed over, they care. Please ensure that all future decisions you make reflect the same thoughtfulness and commitment to our children as the professional educators show day in and day out. This should be your guiding principle. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Christie Jett.
Chairman Monk, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name's Christie Jett, I'm a resident of Gainesboro. So Frederick County is booming. My family moved here seven years ago, and it's already just a different town in fantastic ways. We've all seen the headlines, we've seen the new construction. Year over year, according to the Frederick County numbers themselves, Frederick County has experienced growing population, rising per capita income levels, rising taxable property values, falling unemployment. All of that is great. This speaks to the resilience of our community and, to an extent, is a reflection of confidence in our community by people moving into our area. But that confidence on the part of investors, businesses, citizens, but that confidence is not freely given, it must be earned. Investing in our public schools, I would argue, is not only laudable, but an efficient means of putting our tax dollars to work for us. Investing in our schools puts money directly back into our community, because our school system is one of the largest employers. Our dollars also support wonderful before-and-after-school programs that provide engaging extracurricular opportunities for our children, but also support our working, the parents that make up our workforce. All of this makes our community an appealing site for relocation. Austerity might be all the rage these days, but some things always deserve our support, and our children are those things. Our children deserve adequate funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stephen Puckrell.
I have a motion for a recess, please.
We have a motion for a recess. We have a second.
Second.
Seconds, we made any discussion, seeing none, proceed to vote. All in favor, signify. Say aye. Aye. We recess. We recess.
Mr. Chairman, a move that we reconvene?
Is there a second?
I second.
All right. Motion to remain properly second and we reconvene, all in favor of doing so signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. I believe we were at the citizen comments. Our next speaker was Stephen Kuthrell, or Kluthrell, excuse me. A little tongue tied.
Stephen Kuthrell in Redbud District. First, I would like to address statements made by Mr. Bach at the last meeting. He said, "We do have a federal order issued by the TSA regarding masking on transportation." Then yesterday, there was an announcement on the FCPS Facebook page that, based on updated guidance from the CDC, face masks were no longer required on a school bus. So what is it? A TSA or a CDC order? At the last meeting, I laid out the CDC order and the fact that it was a violation of a new signed bill into law on the 16th of February, yet the masks remained mandatory for nearly two weeks on buses. Well, let's dig into the TSA order. The TSA has issued an emergency amendment and three security directives in support of the CDC order. TSA has extended the face mask requirement for all transportation networks, including public transportation. Further down the page in the Q and A section, it says, "School bus operations are specifically exempted from the statutory definition of public transportation. The TSA security directive likewise does not include school bus operations in its mask mandate." So it can be easily concluded, based on this, that once again, the board and residents in this county have been misled by the FCPS administration. Next, I would like to cover a recent fact check added to the FCPS website that fact checks says Frederick County costs per pupil is $13,000. Fair enough. So then, if there are approximately 14,000 students and 13,000 each, that's 183 million, yet your budget is 268 million. If the cost per pupil is that low, then maybe the area that needs trimming is the uncounted for 85 million needed for the school budget that apparently isn't used for the education of our children. Yet again, more misleading information. I'd like to cover another section entitled "Audits of the FCPS Budget." It says, "Several internal and external audits of the school division are completed every year. Financial statements for all of the audits are reported publicly to the school board's finance committee, as well as the full school board. I called FCPS administration on how to find a copy and was told I needed a FOIA request to get a copy of the audits from the schools. Why do I need a FOIA request to get a copy of an audit that is reported publicly? That doesn't sound very public at all, since something as drastic as a FOIA request can get anything from cellphone texts and private emails to pay rates and county employees and contract agreements. If this administration's definition of reported publicly means FOIA required, then it sounds to me they need a fact check on the definition of public. For the record, I was not charged for the FOIA request. I was told that one audit was filed at the county clerk, county's office. I hopped over to the county website, quickly found the link at the top of the page where anyone can download the 200-page audit in its entirety. Now, that is a great example of something being reported publicly. I'd like to see FCPS administration follow suit with their audits and other things deemed public information. This board is responsible for the actions of FCPS administration, and they are making you look like fools. Savine should not be getting a 5% raise, given the state of his administration, and the board should not approve a full $268 million budget. Stop accepting the lies and start demanding the truth from your subordinates."
Thank you, Mr. Kuthrell. Justin Edens.
Good evening. My name's Justin Edens. I'm from the Stonewall District. First off, I want to say, we have no problems with the teachers getting raises. This is not what we're about. I think the teachers that I've met through Frederick County School System are great teachers, and they deserve everything they get. But I do want to talk about a couple of issues, something that I have with my daughter. We had a conversation, and I asked her about if she had been taught about people of different color being treated differently, being different in class and stuff like that, and she said yes. This is a six-year-old daughter. So this is what they are calling equity. Equity is not teaching that somebody is different because of their color of their skin. That is racism. This board really needs to look at what is going on here. You have a superintendent that is promoting racism. You have a superintendent that did not grant a single exemption from the mask mandates, whether for medical or religious beliefs. This is a direct violation of the American Disability Act and the First Amendment of our Constitution. I'm sure you've all taken an oath to uphold that. Why has no one on this board publicly asked Dr. Savine why no kids were granted an exemption? You have a superintendent that segregated children for not wearing masks. You have a superintendent that won't return emails in regards to questions about tactics used while segregating children. You have a superintendent that makes almost $250,000 a year, only $50,000 less than the superintendent of Loudoun County with 2/3 less kids. If you pass this budget, he will get paid about $2,500, $100 more. You have a superintendent whose budgets are scrutinized by the board of supervisors but fails to give breakdowns of exactly where the money is going. You have a superintendent who is using you and the taxpayers of this county as his piggy bank. Dr. Savine and his budget needs to be investigated fully, then he needs to be fired. He does not have our best interest in mind. The taxpaying citizens of this county deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kevin Callanan.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. My name is Kevin Callanan. I live in the Shawnee District. First, I'd like to address three items from last month's meeting. At the last board meeting, I called on Mr. Hester to apologize to Ms. Martin and Mr. Atkins for his attacks and comments. While Mr. Atkins has exhibited both courage and humility, stepping forth and addressing the community concerns, at least he had the courage to say it. Mr. Hester has not shown the same strength of character. Mr. Hester, I will call on you at every meeting to apologize for your mean-spirited comments to your peers. You should be ashamed of yourself. Also, at the last meeting, there were several strong comments about Dr. Savine, and I agree with many people on the left side of this room, but I have to share one thing. I can disagree with Dr. Savine, but it doesn't mean that I don't respect him. I've known David Savine for 10 years, and I find him to be an honorable man. He is a good husband. He is a good father and a committed educator. It doesn't mean that I don't disagree with a lot of the stuff he does. Lastly, I want to clarify my request from last month's meeting. During my comments, I called on an audit of the school system. I used the wrong term. I was not calling for a financial audit. I'm not challenging your honesty. I am challenging your frugality. What I meant to say is that I'm calling for a review of the school system by citizens to include personnel, infrastructure support. We need some help, and we need more eyes on the problem. Do we have, we used to call it the tooth-to-tail ratio in the military. How many educators versus how many admin people? We need to look at issues like that because I bet there's some things we can do to solve some of the problems. Now, on to one item. Over the last month, a Facebook posting was added to the school's website using the words "disinformation" and "misinformation" to attack citizen disagreements with the exploding school budget. Disinformation is defined as deliberately misleading information to influence public opinion. That word should be struck from that Facebook page. Misinformation is defined as incorrect or misleading information. So now, our school system has published on social media that citizen comments about a grossly expanding budget are either wrong or lies. Let's use the words, the real words. I have another word for you, quibbling. That means to evade or shift from the point through a minor objection or criticism. I stated that student growth has been anemic, 0.5% each year over the last decade, but the staff came back through that same Facebook page and said, "Oh, no. It's not 0.5. It's 0.7." Guys, that's quibbling, and it's not the issue. The issue is the hyper-exploiting budget, which has grown from 156 million in 2012 to a request of 268 million. That should worry everyone. By the way, Roanoke County budget is 18% cheaper than ours with the same number of students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callanan. Our next speaker is Karen Dredsky.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Karen Dredsky. I'm from the Gainesboro District. And last meeting, I had said, "Hey, I'd really like to see us have more transparency." I see on the agenda, we are going to continue moving forward with making these recordings of our meetings available, and I want to thank you for that. I'd like to ask you to expand it beyond that because we're all up here talking about budgets and stuff this evening, and I know that all of the parents would really like to support all of you in your decision, whichever way it goes with the budget, and I'm assuming you're going to approve it because that's usually what happens. But I would like to ask for more transparency because, as you can tell from the comments so far, everyone doesn't feel like they have enough information. If we could get, I know that the finance committee meetings are open to the public. Unfortunately, some of us are working then, and we aren't able to attend them. It would be really great if we could get recordings of those, or if there were some kind of meeting minutes. I know that only three people here are on the finance committee who are seeing and going through this budget, so I'm not sure how the rest of you all get the information to be able to make a decision this evening, although I do believe you have binders or something because I've seen those in the past. And I don't know how long it takes you to go through them or if you get all of your questions answered, but it would be really nice if whatever all of you are given, if it was made available to the public to be able to see, so that we could see what you see. It would eliminate a lot of the issues because then people would know where the money is going. They would understand why things are being requested, why the amounts have increased. And then we can go to our board members and the board of supervisors and be proactive and say, "Hey, can you support this? We really want you to do it because of this." My son goes to James Wood High School, and I hear about how overcrowded it is there. I've been down to Sherrando. I've seen how overcrowded it is there. I know Millbrook is overcrowded. I really was hoping we were going to have a fourth high school in time for my kid to be able to be in a school that wasn't overcrowded. Overcrowding stinks. I hear about, one of the gentlemen spoke about, "The lunch lines will probably change as overcrowding continues." I already hear about the lunch schedule, and I am appalled by it, but there's not a whole lot we can do. So I would really like to see a little bit more transparency. I know we're making our way there. I'd like to see you continue to do that. If you can give us more information, then I think we'll all be able to be much more supportive to all of you with your job and to be able to support you with the board of superintendents also. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Mia Usmani.
Hello, Mia Usmani Apuan. Hello, Mr. Vice Chair. You're my guy. Hello, everybody. Leading is always difficult, as we see. So 20 years ago, I moved here, and I moved to this area so that I could put my kids in military school. So there's a lot about public school and private school that I have some experience at, and also having been through, it's almost like military moving every few years, but it's actually retail. It's almost the same thing, but you don't have the military bond and whatnot. So some of the things that I found out, one of the things that happened in one of the states I lived at is something that I think the county is questioning right now. Monk, I know that, Mr. Monk, that you were wondering about teacher's aides. So I happen to be, my kids were in like first and third, I think, in a school district where they took away all the teacher's aides. There were about 30 kids in the school. If you had over 30 kids in your classroom, then the state would give you a teacher's aide. We had to go in as parents and take over in those classrooms, and some of the things that I saw were, like in one classroom, there were three different classes going in, in like first grade, A, B, and C, because it's the developmental years also that you are dealing with. So teacher's aides that are trained in that, who can get, you know, comfort from the students, it's trust also. So please really consider that because I saw what had happened in the classrooms, and about 30 of us parents who were working and stay-at-homes actually had to go into those classrooms and take over and help those parents. The other issue is, the other day that I was hearing, per student, this amount of almost 20,000 coming up, and I remember at the BOS, I was there for something else. I turned to the woman next to me. She didn't know me. I said, "That's not right." Last year, beginning of the year, I wanted to see where Virginia ranked across the board. There is one state southern, not even 7,000 per student, highest was last year, and this was from 2018 that I could find across the board. Highest was, I think, Connecticut was at 23,000, 24,000 per student. Where were we? 12,500, actually 12,411 in 2018. So when I heard this 19,000, I knew it wasn't right. So I went home that night. I looked on page 118, the school board budget, 119. It's really not that much. It's 13,000 and a little bit more. When you look at how much things have gone up since then, from last year to this year, 6,000 more just on light bulbs. Please really think about this school budget. Dr. Savine has been doing a good job, and most of you have too. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, John Lamanna.
Mr. Chairman, board members, my name is John Lamanna from the Stonewall District, also a proud parent of two graduates from Frederick County Schools and looking forward to my grandson entering in in a couple of years. Strange things have happened over the past year. A community which once held together by a common good and healthy civil debate is hardly recognizable now. Our default setting has become finger-pointing, bitterness, resentment, and anger. This too, though, can change. That change can begin as we recognize a quality education we offer our young county citizens. The budget presented is fiscally sound, supports sustainability, and is consistent with the school board goals and priorities, and also demonstrates value to our teachers and our staff. I hope for its approval. How can anyone say, how can anyone believe that it is in the county's interest to cut $60 million from the school budget, or frankly, to cut any funds at all at this time? Any such cuts would result in an end to our inter-scholastic sports, school band, orchestra, and all other inter-scholastic activities. and all other inter-scholastic activities and electives. A forced choice of teaching math or fielding a football team would be a harsh reality to face. 84%, as you know, 84% of the operating budget supports personnel salaries and benefits. This level of cut would mean 100 teachers would have to be let go. Why would anybody want to cripple or destroy a system with sound leadership, competent teachers and staff, a graduation rate over 92%, exceeding the state average, and has all schools accredited, and boasts of a CTE curriculum and classes among the highest in number and the envy of other divisions in our state? And finally, a word of transparency, and you folks know this. The school board and the Board of Supervisors receives a detailed line-item, 146-page, proposed budget of expenses and income for review and approval. The Board of Supervisors receives quarterly line-item financial reports, which indicate how every penny has been spent for the past three months, and they get this every three months. What else should be asked? What more can be given? I ask you to stay strong, support this budget. It's what the county needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Max Ransom.
Sorry, this is my first time here. I didn't know, am I allowed to hand you any sort of documentation?
If you could hand it to the clerk, and then also, when you return, just use the microphone there. Thank you. Just state your name, magisterial district, and let me your comments to three minutes or less, please. Thank you.
It's Max Ransom from the Shawnee District. And I handed each one of you, I printed seven copies of some reports that I found from the Virginia Board of Education. So they all come from the state. They're the same group of numbers that everybody can compare and not come from different sources. The first page, which I think is the most important, is from fiscal year 2018, which is the last year that the data has been compiled. So if you look at this report, this goes and shows the required local effort, or the required local funding, that a division has to fund the school system. If you look where I highlighted for Frederick County, the required local effort of 2018 was 34 million. Frederick County funded $82 million. So that was a percentage over the required amount, 138.54%. The reason that number is important is because the state average for fiscal year 2018 was 85.19%. So Frederick County, not in theory, in practicality, funded 54.35% more than the state average for that year. If you go back and look through, I compiled all the data from 2010, moving forward to fiscal year 2018. Again, fiscal year 2018 was the latest year they had available. I also compiled the data of the local six school districts, which are the closest ones around us, Clark, Frederick Page, Shenandoah, Warren, and Winchester. The local average for those six school divisions was 97.48%, again for fiscal year 2018. Frederick County was 138.54%, which means we fund a significant amount more money than the other localities or school divisions in our area. Now, I went back and tried to track why this could be. Frederick County is also funded by the state, and they use that by a composite index average. The short story is, the higher the composite index average is, the less amount of money that's appropriated for the state, or for the school division. So in theory, I thought Frederick County would have a high composite index number, which means the local government would have to fund more of the school division. Well, for 2016 to 2018, the composite index number for Frederick County was .388. The highest is .800, which is Arlington, Northern Virginia. The statewide composite index average was .39. So Frederick County was under the state average for the composite index, but yet funded a significant amount more money, even though they got more money from the state. Frederick County's composite index was 45th out of 135 school districts. But as you can see from the report, the top 20 funded schools, Frederick County was number five at 138.54%. So what I don't see is where all of this money is going compared to the other school divisions in Virginia. Secondly, Frederick County Schools does not have top-five funding for their school teachers. So the money does not flow to the educators. It's going somewhere else, and there's sort of a lack of transparency of how we can be funded at such a great percentage versus the other school counties.
Thank you, Mr. Ransom. Our next speaker is Shannon Hammer.
Good evening, chairman and members of the board. My name is Shannon Hammer of the Shawnee District, and I'm a parent of an Admiral Bird and Evendale Elementary student. And this is our first time to even address or present anything to the board. But I'm here in support of my son Carson and his friend Lane Williams, at the encouragement of their principal, Dr. Jessica Nell, to come here tonight and present to you a proposal to expand into a baseball or softball program at the middle school level. So they are next on the list.
Perfect. With that, Carson Hammer. If you could just lower the microphone just a little bit.
I told you I needed a stool.
Shut up. All right, go.
Dear school board officials, we would like to consider expanding the middle school sports program to include baseball and softball. The high schools already have teams.
Sorry to stop you. Could you move the microphone just a little?
Sorry.
You're doing great. Appreciate it.
High school, by adding teams at a middle school level, it would be shaping players to be ready for the high school teams later in their school careers. Sports teams allow more students to be involved and feel connection to their schools. Students participate and sports perform better academically in schools, as well as baseball and softball are great sports for teamwork communication skills.
Over the summer, students could volunteer to assist rebuilding the field to prepare it for baseball and softball. This opportunity would help build team chemistry. There are a lot of baseball players in the county that would want to play for school. There are other middle schools that have baseball, that have middle school baseball teams. Prince William County and Fairfax County, just to name a few, both have middle school baseball teams. There are many students that would be interested playing for a middle school level team. With any new sport, there would be start-up costs for each school. The field would be an investment that is a must for team and school competition. The field could also be used by PE classes, so it would be a benefit to the school. A team would need a coach, an assistant coach, and additional equipment would also be needed. We would need BB core bats for the league, baseballs and softballs, and gloves. It's the Virginia high school rules we have to follow. It is good to have student-athletes. Baseball is also a great way for kids to meet new people. Sincerely, Carson Hammer and Lane Williams. We have 80 signatures that support this idea.
Thank you so much. Well done, gentlemen. Very well done. Our next speaker will be Kathy Oldham.
My name is Kathy Oldham, and I live in the Stonewall District. I'm a parent of a James Wood High School senior, and I teach in the county. I'm here today to remind the board that your job is to support the students and teachers of Frederick County. This includes special education students, gifted students, English language learners, music students, athletic students, like those young men that we just saw speaking, kindergarten students, and also seniors getting ready to graduate. Your job is to stand up and defend these students and work toward giving them the best opportunities available. When teachers and administrators say they need more teachers, kindergarten aides, or a new high school, it is your job to do everything in your power to make that happen. It is unfathomable to me that some of you would choose to serve on this board and question the very people who work with our county's precious children every single day. These teachers work overtime, putting these children's needs first over their own families. Teachers spend hours and hours making sure these kids' needs are met all day long. Trust these teachers and their administrators to tell you what these kids need. Unless you visit these schools often, you really don't know. That also goes for some of the citizens claiming they know what is best for our schools, too. I would bet many in this room have never substituted or even visited a school building ever. Do you know we're actually short on substitute teachers? That would be a great way to get an idea of what great and wonderful things happen in our schools. I support Dr. Sovine and his budget. Please do your job and support our schools. Our children deserve adequate funding. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Yolanda Castaneda.
Hi, everybody. My name is Yolanda Castaneda, and I live in the Opikuun District. I work as a translator at the Frederick County Public School buildings right now, and our community is facing growing, more and more diversity every year and every day, I would say. And all of our children deserve quality education, no matter their background, language, or culture. I am in support of the budget, but Dr. Sovine providing funding is essential in order to meet the needs of all students. Our most risked students are harmed when we take fundings away from the program and staff they need the most. We talk about diversity and wanting the best for all the students. I'm not sure how we can say we are in support of all the students when we have school members, school board members who have a history of racism and homophobia, and who have said the war, the art war, in public posted. I have hear people complain about Dr. Sovine, yet nobody has complained about this school member who has publicly made his sexual and racist comments on Facebook. I have the pictures to prove it as well. I have hear people about segregation. I wonder, and I challenge you, to look around and tell me how many Hispanic speakers or English-as-a-second-language-speaker parents and citizens you see. Just myself, or probably two more. You know why? Because the school is not even offering a parent to come and be able to communicate their feelings in their own language. And yes, I know, we are in the United States. It's not America, because America is a huge country. It's not just the United States. We are in the United States of America, and we all should learn English. But that's not the case. Sometimes you can't. Sometimes you have a disability or something that prevents you to do that. And your job is to support all the students. I'm not saying only Hispanic, diversity students, ESL language, special education students and staff. That's your job. I'm not questioning his budget or how much money he makes. He may be deserve the money because he is standing up for the kids and the teachers and the school as well. I'm not questioning how much any of you make. If you deserve it, go for it. I want my tax to go to your budget, to your wallet, whatever, if you deserve it. If you're standing up for the childrens, take it. Take it. But put the money where it needs to be, which is education. Our children deserve equity education and deserve so much more. And for those of them that are talking about segregation, look around. I'm sorry, this may be taken in the wrong way, but white people is not being segregated because they're put in a different room to use a mask. If you choose to use a mask, you choose it. If you choose not to wear a mask, it's your choice. Some of you has masks, some of you don't have masks. Nobody's complaining about it because it's your choice. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is William Schaefer. William Schaefer.
I don't know Steve Edwards. I'm sure he's a good man. And using a different name is just another symptom of what is a long list of what seems to be a lack of transparency. Just like at the end of the last meeting, when Mr. Askins asked Mr. Sovine about the mask exemptions, Dr. Sovine either lied or showed his incompetence in his duties by saying there was an appeals process to the mask exemptions. Dr. Sovine has been copied on every single email we've sent to school administration. In fact, he was copied on the email that Mr. Daniel sent home, saying that we never requested a mask exemption, and that the mask exemption, anything to do with it, was considered closed, and that there was no other, you know, road we could take to resolve the issue. I just wanted to share some scores with you for the school board, or for the school over the last couple of years. From 2019, English SOL scores dropped from 74 to 64. Math scores dropped from 79 to 49. Science scores dropped from 79 to 52. In 2005 to 2006, Frederick County was ranked 57th in SOL schools throughout Virginia. We are now ranked 82nd. I'm glad to hear teachers here, though, today, talking about 504 plans and children with IEPs. For two years, children who have 504 plans and IEPs have been left out of school, have been denied access to public facilities, and have been segregated, and it doesn't matter for what reason they were segregated. I don't wish to defund our children. I only wish that a small portion of the funds that I provide to run the schools be used in the way I see fit for my child's education. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Martha Sparkman.
My name is Martha Sparkman. I live in the Red Bud District. And there's an interesting thing about money. You can spend, you have two different families, and you've got this family spending $600 a month on food, and the other one spends maybe 400, but one of them is spending most of it on sugar and candy, and the other one's buying food. Which one cares more about their kids? Which one has a healthier diet? It's not about how much money you spend, it's what you do with it. And the lack of transparency in the school budget, the line items, is troubling to me. It kind of reminds me, and I knew this family, family was in debt, and the husband went out and got a new car because he wanted to look good. And that would improve his chances with his next job or something like that. They ended up in bankruptcy. It's not important to look good. It's not important to spend more money than you have. And this is a lesson to the children. If they understand economics and know that there are some things that you want, but you can't have the Cadillac, you can get this Volkswagen instead, and it'll still get you there. It will. Look at how much money is being spent, on what, what are the materials? This also puts me back in mind, tell me if you know these, well, just nod if you know these names. Marva Collins, Jaime Escalante, Maria Montesori, and Romaldo Spalding. Each of these people was a teacher. Each of them taught very poor children. Each of them got amazing outcomes because they had very high expectations and taught them step-by-step how to do things. Marva Collins worked in a public school, and she had her, I think, third graders reading not just the Aesop's Fables, but Shakespeare and scientific things. And she would put the kids' papers out on the wall outside of her class, and other teachers got mad because there were children who could spell big, long words. Well, that can't be. An eight-year-old can't spell Tyrannosaurus Rex. It's impossible. Well, she knew it was possible. And she and Jaime Escalante, who taught Barrio Spanish-speaking kids AP Calculus, and they passed the test to get into college. passed the test to get into college. And he was called a cheater. Marva Collins was accused of cheating. I think that we need to raise the standards and have the accountability and understand that it doesn't take $80 or $20 will do it.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be David Sparkman.
David Sparkman, Red Bud District, editor of the Frederick County Republican. I've got a couple of different misconceptions that have been presented here tonight, and I'd like to set it clear. First of all, have you teachers, I appreciate you wearing red, that's Republican colored, have you received a 28% pay raise in the last five years? The county has funded a 28% pay raise. 5% per year compounded makes 28%. Have you received it?
Mr. Sparkman, Mr. Sparkman, if you could address the chair.
Mr. Savine decided that you didn't need that money, that other things needed that money instead, okay? So, complaining about, complaining about the idea that you're underpaid. Second of all, yeah, you're, you're underpaid because Dr. Savine-
Mr. Sparkman, please address the chair.
Yes, sir. The second thing is the fear within the county school system. Now, we've had lots of teachers speak tonight, but they all admitted they are teachers. I have friends, I have one friend who was fired because he didn't want to teach his fourth graders about having sex. He felt that was immoral, and so he was fired. Now, do we have a spirit of fear within our own community here? Well, if you look at how the people who didn't want to wear masks were segregated, yes, we do have a spirit of fear yet in our county. And teachers, except for the ones present, are driven by a concern that if they speak out and speak their own opinion, they will be released. Now, to the final thing about the, the school budget. There's a very simple solution to that school budget. Dr. Savine, I'm not saying he has to resign or anything, it might be a good thing, but that would take some of the animosity out of the system, but the Board of Supervisors has requested for a year and a half to have a meeting with the school administration. And the school administration has refused that meeting. Now, what options does the school, does the Board of Supervisors have? The only option they have is to say no, and say no loud enough that maybe they get a little respect. School board, let's have that meeting with the Board of Supervisors. Let's hash these things out and get the funding that the school system needs. Savine, wake up. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jennifer Hall.
Jennifer Hall, I'm with the Shawnee District. When I graduated from Charando High School, ooh, accent came out there, my bad, High School, like many people, I left for college, moved to a big city, and never expected to return. That all changed when I had a son and then did not think twice about moving back so that my child could attend Frederick County Public Schools. And I share that with you because, like so many other people, that is probably one of the many reasons why we are seeing such growth here, because our school system is a wonderful place, and so many people want to move here for jobs and to raise their children in this community. I currently have the privilege of taking part in the FCPS 101 course. It's been a wonderful experience to be able to learn the ins and outs of the school district. Dr. Savine, as well as the Assistant Superintendents, Dr. Angelo and Mr. Brock have been incredibly open and transparent with us. They're willing to answer all of our questions, so I have, and I always have a lot of them. So I have no doubt that they are providing the same respect to you all, as well as all of the Board of Supervisors members. I highly encourage all of you, if you have not already, to participate, as well as all Frederick County parents, to participate if they have the opportunity. The first thing we learned in FCPS 101 was about the portrait of the graduate, which I see on the wall right there. Wonderful. I hope everybody has an opportunity to learn about that. We also learned about Inspire 2025, the strategic plan for the school district. I'll remind you of those four goals because I think it's important as we're talking about the budget. Student success, culture, strategic partners, and high-quality staff. They've all come up in some way tonight throughout the other presentations. The district has made great strides toward these goals even during the COVID-19 pandemic, so you should all be very proud. Our school district must have adequate funding in order to continue toward progress on these goals. Our teachers, staff, community, and especially our children need your support, now more than ever. I hope you'll support Dr. Savine's budget proposal, especially the increase in salaries and the extra positions. I just hope Human Resources is able to fill those positions. As I close, I want to say how happy I am to see that there were many teachers present tonight. I want to say thank you to everyone in this room and everyone else. I want to say thank you for our teachers and our staff, for putting your heart and soul into supporting our children. I know what a difficult job it is. My husband's a teacher, I see it each and every day, and I just want to thank everybody from the bottom of my heart with a young child for everything that our teachers do and for everything that you guys do to support our school system. Thank you.
Thank you. The board also received 14 public comments that were written via email, as well as in hard copy before us into the board. So appreciate that and appreciate the board's time in listening to that, and thank you for your public comment. Our next item on our agenda is the report of Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Savine.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's my pleasure to begin my report and like to congratulate our Charando High School wrestlers, Kegan, Judd, and Anthony Luciani for winning the Class Four State Championship. Judd won the 145-pound title, while Luciani captured the 120-pound championship. As a team, Charando finished second in the state championship, which was the highest finish ever in the school's history. I'd also like to congratulate both the Millbrook and Charando High School girls' basketball teams for advancing to compete in the state championship tournament. Millbrook has completed, has competed in the state tournament before and won a state title. For Charando, this is the first time in the school's history that the girls' basketball team has made it to the state tournament. We certainly wish both teams well at the conclusion of this week and hopefully into next week. Like to invite the community to visit the FCPS website and watch the latest episode of FCPS Spotlight, which highlights James Wood High School senior Ashley James, who is the first student to ever serve on the Frederick County Public School Special Education Advisory Committee. In the program, Ashley and FCPS Director of Special Instructional Services, Michelle Sandy, discuss the role of the Special Education Advisory Committee, as well as the value of having a student serving on the committee and sharing her perspective. Also like to recognize Deputy Spence, who serves as Orchard View Elementary School's School Resource Officer. Recently, Deputy Spence went above and beyond the call of duty to help a student who lost a ring on the school's playground, which had great sentimental value because it was given to her by a friend who passed away a few years ago. After learning about the lost ring, Deputy Spence took the initiative to bring a metal detector to the school and spent about 40 minutes searching for the ring on the playground. He was able to find it and turn it to the student. This is just one of many examples of the positive impact of our, our SROs have on our students and our schools. And finally, like to remind everyone that the FCPS Teacher Career Fair is being held from noon until 3:30 on Saturday at Robert E. Ailer Middle School. The fair is open to individuals who are eligible for or hold a Virginia teacher teaching license. Registration is highly encouraged, but not required. For more information on the event and how to register, please visit the FCPS website. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report tonight. I do want to extend my appreciation to all the citizens that came out during public comment, in particular, those that expressed their strong support for our Frederick County Public Schools. We have amazing staff, parents, and students. I thank everyone for coming out and engaging with this board.
Thank you so much, Dr. Savine. Next report is Assistant Superintendent for Administration, Ms. Rittenhour will be sharing that this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Savine, and members of the board. Our membership report this evening is from February 28, 2022. Since the last enrollment report to you on January 31, our enrollment has decreased overall by 21 students, with a total of 14,006 students. The most notable decrease since the last report were 15, 15 students at Charando High School and nine students at Middletown Elementary, respectively. The most notable increase is enrollment that was observed for this reporting period were, were seven students at Bass Hoover Elementary and five students at Evendale Elementary. The grade level that saw the most significant change in enrollment since the last report was ninth grade, with a decrease of seven students, followed closely by 11th grade and fifth grade, each with a decrease of six students. The grade level that saw the most notable increase was first grade, with an increase of four students. We have several schools that are currently over enrollment capacity, and those schools are as follows. James Wood High School is at 112%. Millbrook High School, 113%. Charando High School, 119%. Armel Elementary, 112%. Bass Hoover, 105%. Jordan Springs Elementary, 104%. And Middletown Elementary School at 109%. This concludes my update on enrollment, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Rittenhour. Any questions? Appreciate it. Thank you. Next, Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, Ms. Myers will be sharing that this evening.
Yes, Chairman Monk, members of the board, thank you for allowing the Instruction Department to provide ongoing updates in regard to our Inspire 2025, and specifically, student success, Goal One. We're excited to welcome Candace Henderson with us this evening. Candace is an English teacher at Millbrook High School, and I, I think you're going to really enjoy what she's about to share with you and the work she's doing with our students that is aligned with Inspire 2025. So I turn it over to Candace.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Myers. I just want to extend my gratitude to the board for giving me the opportunity to share the exciting work that we are doing with Inspire 2025 in providing meaningful experiences for all students. I just wanted to give a quick highlight of, of who I am. Of course, I've been a veteran Frederick County teacher. This is my 19th year in the classroom. I started working at Millbrook High School when we opened in 2003. It's been a wonderful time in Frederick County with the Inspire 2025, so I wanted to share a little bit of my journey with you. While concepts surrounding Inspire 2025 and Profile of a Graduate are really part of my instructional practice already, in the last few years, I began to really think more intentionally about how I would implement them to support the learning objectives and to provide more individual choice for students and topics, product and presentation. One assignment that was wildly successful that I started with in 2019 was a public service announcement where students created a PSA that they researched an issue. I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous. I will try to calm down. This is, this is my first time doing something like this, this grand scale. So, but they gathered evidence. They were so excited about this project. And even though this was in the fall of 2019, you know, it was kind of getting started with some of these Profile of a Graduate concepts, they embraced this, this process. We had students working on stop-motion animation. We had them working through research practices. And while, you know, I had some ideas, they took this idea and ran with it. Their creativity was amazing. I had students working with our green screen and our ITC, Scott Lewis, to help them understand how to use WeVideo, and the end products were just incredible. This was a really great motivator for me to continue with this line of thinking in my classroom. And then, of course, COVID happened. So while the progress was initially impeded, we, we got right back on that horse, and it gave me a time to reflect on what I wanted to do next. So that's where I got to my aha moment. Now I'm getting a little bit more comfortable. So where can I take my students from here? This is where it gets exciting. I love seeing how my students are empowered by the kind of instruction that we've been doing in our classes, and they're able to take more ownership of their learning. They, I'm working on fostering an environment that allows students to take risks and try new things and fail forward, to understand that failure is not, not something to, like an endpoint, it's something to embrace as an opportunity to learn and move forward. COVID prompted me to reframe how I approached instruction and learning. I had to adapt and evolve to a new situation, which meant rethinking not only what I was teaching, but how I was going to teach it. It gave me firsthand experience with some of these competencies that we address, flexibility and adaptability, for sure, learning how to learn, had to try many new things, collaboration with staff, with students, and communication with home. This was a really great motivator as I went through last year and thinking of how I was going to approach this year. I'm excited to share a couple of really great things that my AP 12 and 11th grade students are doing this year. I'm going to highlight one individual project, myself as a reader, and a group project that we have just completed called Teaching the Renaissance. And in AP English 11, I'm going to share a little bit about the collaborative discussions and our visual essay that we did as a group for the crucible. I do want to give Mary Tedrow, one of my mentors from my early years in Frederick County, in the Shenandoah Valley Writing Project for the inspiration for the myself as a reader lesson. With my seniors at the beginning of the school year, we decided to think about the relationships that we have with books, thinking back to our time in elementary school and middle school, thinking about how we grew as readers and the wonderful opportunities that we were able to share about the different stages of our reading journey. We focused on our resilience in pursuing texts that may be really challenging, our adaptability when we may have been confronted with a text that made us question something new, and our approach to learning as we learn to grapple with more challenging texts as the years grew on. This was wonderful to see them reflecting on that learning process and their years either in Frederick County or in other schools coming up through the system. As we progressed in our third quarter, we did lessons. My students planned and implemented lesson plans for the Renaissance. So we, in introducing Shakespeare and poetry, students were given the opportunity to choose different topics and then provide, they worked together, actually, it was, they had very little other than, this is your topic, these are your sources, run with it. And they performed beautifully. Because we were presenting lessons to class and they had a template that they were using, they were definitely invested in making sure the lessons were exciting, fun, but also informative. They may have had a little bit of an unofficial competition as to who had the hardest cahoot or the most engaging activity. We definitely laughed at the most unconventional approach to reading Renaissance poetry I've ever seen. We struggled through the hardest true or false questions on the Stuart Dynasty. We played a game of Mafia modeled after King Henry VIII's wives, and a few rounds, and a few rounds of Hoodman's Blind, which is a form of blind men's bluff that was popular during King Henry VIII's reign. Embedded with all of these lessons were overarching questions and guiding ideas that the students determined themselves. These were ways that they were able to capture the purpose of their learning and the importance of the skills that they were sharing with their peers. The project was so much fun, and it's definitely something I'm going to be pursuing again in the future. With my juniors, we've had some wonderful opportunities to embed critical thinking, problem-solving, and social and cultural empathy through some rich discussions and some projects that are not necessarily, or inquiry learning opportunities that are not necessarily project-based. Sometimes our collaborative work helps us better understand the, a specific context of a work of literature we're studying in order to build a better social and cultural empathy toward the author or toward the time period in which the text was written. We're able to understand strategies and work through techniques in writing. was written. We're able to understand strategies and work through techniques in writing using problem solving and critical thinking, or approach essential questions through the Socratic method. The most successful experience includes a jigsaw discussion of Martin Luther King Jr.'s Letter from Birmingham Jail, a graphic design visual of a rhetorical argument, and an investigation of how we define human nature. And as you can see, we've used manipulatives and paper and computers and all sorts of things to allow students to problem solve and guide their learning and have rich conversations about the topics that we cover. This also leads us to our group visual essay, which my students are actually completing tomorrow in class, and they have performed beautifully. We are working with a purpose here. So students have a lot of control in terms of their choices on how they design their visual essay with some guidances to the purpose. Each group has a different essential question that they are focusing on, and they have assigned roles to themselves for different responsibilities and establish norms for how they're going to work with their groups each day that they meet in class, including no phones, no games, staying on task, and making sure we keep an eye on the clock. This has really shown some confidence boosters in my students. They feel more connected to the stuff that we discuss in class. Our conversations have been richer, and I'm seeing improvement through that collaborative process with students who are a little bit more hesitant to be a part of the public part of the classroom. So I did ask a few of my students to share some of their experiences from being in my classroom. And I should have taken note of this, these are AP seniors. They are conditioned. They understand that when Mrs. Henderson asks for a response to a prompt, they generally give me a long response. They know me well. So I do want to give a special thanks to these wonderful students who took the time to reflect and share with me some of their thoughts on things that happen in class. So my first comment is from Zoe, and she says, "In class with group and individual projects, I have majorly expanded my skills in communication and collaboration. Being able to talk to others and share ideas, we have, helps to further the progress to the goal. And during that process, we develop our experience to use later in life in our career field. The texts that we study and analyze in class also help to teach us more about social and cultural empathy. The seminars we have take the sense of community and collaboration efforts and combine them with endeavors in learning social and cultural empathy to give us a clear understanding of these ideas and how we will use them in our futures. I feel comfortable and confident in this class when I present my ideas or a project because I feel prepared and knowledgeable on the subject." My next student is Molly, and she shared with us, "As one of Ms. Henderson's AP English 12 students, I often find myself demonstrating several of the Portrait of a Graduate competencies. One competency that is very prevalent in her lessons is the aspect of social and cultural empathy. Through examining several pieces of early British literature, we are able to connect with people from the past who are parts of very different cultures and social structures. For example, we analyze excerpts from The Wife of Bath's Tale, where we were exposed to the lives and struggles of women who lived during the 1300s. We did several assignments that helped us to really connect with the text and socially empathize with the main character as she discussed her many difficulties with relationships as a woman in society. Mrs. Henderson also held a class seminar to discuss this text, so my classmates and I were able to expand our connections and understandings even further after discussing the text amongst each other." And last, but certainly not least, this is from Aralise. Aralise says, "During my junior year, our class focused on American literature, and I loved this course. I discovered amazing books, one of my favorite being In the Time of the Butterflies, written by Julia Alvarez. I was able to read this book for my independent American novel study. This assignment was a representation of the social and cultural empathy competency. Being of Latin American origin, this was a great feeling because it is often easy for educators to forget to allow their students an opportunity to spread their wings into different cultures. By creating a research project, more specifically a virtual historical timeline of the Dominican Republic's history, I was able to stretch my creativity and innovation in a non-traditional way. This assignment was not only able to teach me about a new culture and society, but it gave me a brand-new perspective of myself and served as a great reminder that I am able to make a change, too. Another one of my favorite assignments in Mrs. Henderson's class was reading and analyzing Amy Tan's essay Mother Tongue. This particular piece of writing, accompanied by the analysis and class discussion, integrated the competency of learning how to learn. It served as an example of new ideas by showing us that the complexity of the English language, so natural to us, can be interpreted in a variety of ways by different people that can lead to different experiences and perspectives." In closing, I would just like to share that I have had a wonderful experience seeing my students grow through this process. As I have embraced the Inspire 2025 competencies and have worked with wonderful administrators and wonderful staff, my love for this approach only continues to grow. The meaningful conversations, the real-world connections that we're making have empowered students, have given them voice, and have provided them with authentic experiences that cannot be replaced. I'm also learning that students thrive best when they feel their voices are heard. Students are capable, and they're capable of guiding their own learning, capable of so much more than sometimes we give them credit for. They will surprise you. You're never too old to learn something new. I will have to give credit to one of my dear colleagues, Marley, who once said that every day is a school day. I firmly believe that. And trying and failing is so much better than not trying at all. So what I know from my experience is that the relationships I have fostered through Inspire 2025 with my students and colleagues have strengthened my skill set as a teacher and a leader, and I can't wait to see where our journey takes us next. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Henderson.
I have to say, if you want to be inspired, go to Mrs. Henderson's classroom and just be a fly on the wall. Because truly, her students, it's a magical place, and everybody should have that benefit of being a student even for a day in her classroom. So that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Monk.
Thank you, Dr. Myers. Seeing no questions, we'll move to the next item on our agenda, which is the FCPS School Board Member Code of Conduct. All right, this is something that our board has discussed at a couple meetings and have received some feedback. I know Mr. Comstock has received feedback as well from multiple members of the board. And pretty much, I think the goal around the Code of Conduct is that we each, and I shared this before, each will present ourselves in a way that our students can see and be proud of. And so I don't know if it would please the board, and I could put this forward in a motion, but I think that the Code of Conduct, what I read here, boils down to kind of the golden rule in treating others with respect in the way that we would want to be treated. And to me, that encapsulate a lot of what that Code of Conduct is and think that we as board members could get behind that. So I could put forward that as a motion, that that be our Code of Conduct moving forward in conversations. I've talked with school administration, and it seems like that's kind of been our process for a number of years, and that might behoove us to officially adopt that as a Code of Conduct. So with that, I'll put forward that as a motion to be our School Board Member's Code of Conduct, the golden rule.
I'll make a second on that.
Any discussion on that or amendments? Mr. Comstock.
I haven't had a lot of feedback. I know I've presented the first time, and then we read again a second time when I was asking for feedback. Haven't received a lot of feedback, short of the couple of people who reached out. So the premise behind the Code of Conduct, as I've stated when I presented it and at the last meeting, I'm not intending for this to be a set of rules or something where someone can say, oh, you broke that rule and call people out. That's not the intent with this. The intent was for us as a board to just say, we're going to treat each other as a board with respect and behave in such a way that our teachers and our people who are under us and our students who we represent and the citizens of this county, that we do so in a respectful way to each other and to this community. And so, you know, I stand behind that. I stand behind the way it was presented. If the pleasure of the board is boiling it down to just the golden rule, then I suppose I understand that. I don't see anything in here, the way that it's been laid out, that is confrontational, or that I think if you are willing to adhere to the golden rule, that you'd have a hard time, or any, not you specifically, but that any board member should have a hard time getting behind. However, there's my piece.
Thank you, Mr. Comstock. Mr. Hester.
I would have to agree with Mr. Comstock. I feel that what has been laid out and what he's put forward is something that we can all get behind the document itself. Thank you.
Other comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Atkins.
I appreciate all the work that went into it, and you've taken some of my thoughts into consideration on the proposed Code of Conduct. I'm happy with going by the golden rule. I think, you know, that kind of summarizes everything there. What I don't want to happen, and you did lay this out, is that we become beholden to this Code of Conduct, because I am not beholden to any member on this board. I am beholden to my constituents. I'm beholden to the oath I've taken to the Constitution of the United States and the Commonwealth of Virginia. That is how civics goes. I mean, this isn't something that we put rules on up here on the board. So I am looking forward to working with everybody, and I think we can all get behind the golden rule. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Other comments from board members?
I'll share in putting forward that, and we've talked about this, I think it is important, as I said earlier, that we serve as a representation of what we hope our children and staff aspire to be. I also think part of working on this board is working with others. And there are many times, whether it be constituents or individuals on boards, this board or other boards, in which we've got to work together, whether we agree or disagree. And my hope is that we can do that in a way that is meaningful and civil and provides the most positive outcome for our students. And so that was the proposition behind that rule, is that that's something simple that I'm hopeful that we could remember in those interactions that we have, not only with each other, but with our community.
Other comments? The motion before us is about the Code of Conduct being before a golden rule. We have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I would just say that, you know, I'm appreciative of board members being willing to state that they would be willing to follow the golden rule. Thank you for that. I guess I've put forward a Code of Conduct. I know there were specific issues with item number four, so we can remove item number four. I'd also like to incorporate the items that Mrs. White recommended, and I personally will be signing this and will commit myself as a member of this board to adhering to these things. And I hope others join me in doing so. And if not, please follow the golden rule you say you're going to follow.
Thank you, Mr. Comstock. Mr. Lake?
I don't know what removing item number four accomplishes. Just for the audience, it says delegating the authority of the administration of the school system to the superintendent. And that's his job. I don't think our Code of Conduct is going to change that one bit. He's still the chief administrator of the school division, so don't know why that's an issue here. Anybody?
Sure, I'm happy to speak to that. If you recall, that was one of the motions that I put forward last time. And I think, having been on this board for a couple years now, the conversation that I hear from board members and others is that it's not our role, and it's not our responsibility. And I fully recognize that our role is around hiring and firing of the superintendent, working on policy and in budget. And unfortunately, when I put forward policy or make amendments to the budget, I'm told that that's not our role either. So I'm thinking that, you know, my frustration with number four is not anything to do with Dr. Savine, but ensuring that our board has a place in the administration of Frederick County Public Schools.
All right, so we'll vote on the motion before us. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Lake.
Who you are or are not going to take out four?
So, sure, we have a motion before us about the Code of Conduct becoming the golden rule. It's been made and seconded. If there is an amendment to that, then we can hear that now.
So there will be only the golden rule as the Code of Conduct?
Should the motion pass.
Okay. I cannot agree with that.
Sure. Mr. Lake?
Can we just be very clear here? Be very clear what we're voting on, please. I have the 11 items in front of me. Are we voting on these 11 items?
So the motion that's been stated is that it would be, in replacing of these 11 items, that it would be a simplistic golden rule that encompasses all of these with the exception of four there.
With the exception of four.
Well, that isn't treating others as we'd like to be treated.
Okay. I'm clear.
But currently, the motion is just for the golden rule?
It's for us acting in a civil manner and moving forward and putting some of the issues that we have behind us. We're using the golden rule as an example and model for how we can do that. If we want to simplify that, that's fine. It's less about the golden rule and more about the intent of us moving forward in a positive direction.
Mr. Chairman, if you will, I am just really concerned that this lacks all accountability for previous behaviors, and there has yet to be a public apology from Ms. Martin.
Excuse me.
And I think it's really important that we move forward with the Code of Conduct, not just the golden rule.
Sure. So, excuse me, excuse me. With that, I'm happy to remove the motion. We can debate the Code of Conduct that's before us here, and happy to do that if it pleases the board, so long as Mr. Atkins is willing to rescind his second as well.
I will rescind my second. And with that, Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment?
Sure. Mr. Atkins.
All right, to Ms. White's comment, once again, this now would put us to adhere to this Code of Conduct. When I do not adhere to this Code of Conduct, I adhere to the wishes of my constituents and, once again, to the oath of office that I've taken, just like everybody else up here.
If your constituents wish murder upon one of your fellow board members, would you do such?
I think that would be illegal.
Well, then...
Just like keeping kids amask.
Very well.
Thank you. Thank you. Other board member comments?
Thank you. Appreciate the comment there. The Code of Conduct has been provided in our board packets, which I believe is publicly available, and we can get a copy for you at a later time. Thank you. I'll share, and I know Mr. Comstock, we've had multiple conversations, Ms. White, others on the board. I in no way believe that these are things that we cannot follow. I have shared this evening and publicly that I do have a concern about number four, and that has nothing to do with our current superintendent, it's just the role of our school board. But other places, I think we as individuals on this board are elected by constituents, but at the same time, I don't think that gives us any authority to act in a way that our community shouldn't be proud of.
Would it be helpful for us to, we have an April work session during the day, and would it be helpful for us to have a conversation about this and move forward in that way at that time?
Mr. Chairman, I would propose that for the time being, we adopt the golden rule, and that in the interim, before that work session, board members spend some time going through the Code of Conduct and actually providing feedback on which items they feel they'd have a hard time, or they feel they would not be able to adhere to and still represent their constituents while adhering to, I suppose. So then maybe we can have a detailed discussion about it in person at that spring training session, but at least in the meantime, we will have, that would be my...
Mr. Hester.
I say we just go on and accept the code of conduct that Mr. Comstock has laid out, because I feel more comfortable with that than just the golden rule.
Sure, happy. I would move then, if that's the pleasure of the board, I'd move for the second meeting that we strike number four out of that. Is there a second?
I second it.
Mr. Comstock?
Do we need to second Mr. Hester's motion to?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Well, I don't necessarily know that there was a motion there. Was that intended to be a motion?
Yes, I'll make you that.
Okay.
Mr. Hester's motion.
All right, so there's been a motion that we adopt the code of conduct as presented before us, and I will then move that we strike number four from that code of conduct. Do we have a second? It's been made and seconded that we strike number four from the existing code of conduct as an amendment to Mr. Hester's motion. Discussion on that amendment, I know we've had some of that already.
Will we be adding my concerns?
That would be a separate amendment, but we could, could absolutely.
I would move that we amend.
So we would, we would need to resolve this amendment and then move to those amendments. But, so we'll vote on this first amendment first and then move to those amendments. Questions about the proposed amendment, which is to remove item number four. It's been made and seconded. Further discussion, Mr. Comstock?
Just to read aloud for the public, item number four says, "I will delegate authority for the administration of the schools to the superintendent and establish a process for accountability of administrators." I do believe that is our role. We, we do delegate authority. We do not delegate the responsibility for what we do. However, we do delegate authority to school administration. I, I don't understand why there is an issue with it. However, in an effort of trying to make this a more agreeable item for the board, as all of the other remaining items are more in how board members will conduct themselves, rather than in the duties that they will do in this role, I'm okay with this amendment to remove that item in an effort to try to get this to an agreeable place for board members.
And I agree. I think it, to me, it seems out of place for the rest of the code of conduct there. Other? Perfect. We'll move forward with a vote on that. The motion is to amend the proposed code of conduct by removal of the current item number four. Sign no for the discussion or move to a vote. All in favor removing that item signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No?
No.
So the noes have it, and that motion fails. So we have before us Mr. Hester's motion of the code of conduct. Mrs. White, this might be a time, if you have any amendments, that?
Yeah, I move that we add, "I will always remember that foremost concern of the board is to improve and enhance the teaching and learning experience for all students in the public schools of Virginia. I will respect others' views, recognizing the value of individual differences. I will not engage in aggressive bullying or intimidating behavior, or encourage others to engage in aggressive bullying or intimidating behavior. I will not encourage indiscriminatory or harassing behavior."
Thank you, Mrs. White. We've heard a motion from Ms. White to add two additional bullets. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to add those bullets. Discussion about those bullets themselves as the proposed amendment.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Atkins?
I just don't think I can, on the one, the very first one you had was to respect other people's decisions. I can't respect all of everybody's decisions, whether, you know, we agree or disagree. I'm not going to respect every decision. That's why I vote no on things. So with that in mind, I'm going to have to respectfully say no to this amendment.
Further discussion. Mr. Comstock?
Mr. Chairman, if we're going back to the golden rule, it's all about treating others the way we want to be treated and respecting each other. So while you don't have to agree with someone's position and their views, I don't think a line item asking us as board members to treat each other with respect is out of line, or is asking you to necessarily adopt their views. It's just asking you to treat each other with a certain level of respect. So I don't think that's out of line. I believe that for, to however many items there were, lost track, that Mrs. White added are all in line with the golden rule. So I'm in favor of adding those.
Other comments from the board on the amendment as presented?
I would share, Mr. Comstock, I agree with you. I've served on this board, and there's been many opinions that I disagree with, but I think we can treat everyone with respect, even if we have, we can have disagreements, but at the same time, we can be civil and treat those as we wish to be treated. So would agree with that sentiment. Further discussion on the amendment, Ms. White has before us of addition to those two bullet points.
Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote on the amendments, which is to add those two bullet points. It's been made and seconded. All in favor of the addition of those two amendments? And if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, the amendment passes. So we have an amended code of conduct before us, which is similar to what you've, what you have on your sheet, but that there are two additional bullet points. Further discussion on the amended code of conduct?
I'm sorry, but I lost, I lost place. Is item four in or out?
It's in.
It's in.
Yes. Can we vote?
All right, all in favor of the code of conduct that has been amended, leaving item four in, Mr. Lake. Additional points of Mrs. White's, two points signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
And the code of conduct passes. All right. Now we're going to move on to item F of the agenda, video posting of school board meetings. We have, Dr. Savine?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Before you, you have a memorandum from Mr. Edwards. At your last meeting, Mr. Edwards provided you with an overview, and based on the board's action on February the 15th, it was the preference to utilize, of the board, to utilize a third-party closed caption provider. I want to thank Mr. Edwards and our audio video specialist team for working with two vendors to price out the best options there. You see a recommendation provided in the memorandum, and you also see the rationale in three bulleted items listed out there, Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Savine, and appreciate the work of Mr. Edwards and his staff on this. And I know that, Mr. Atkins, you'd put forward a proposal about a potential funding opportunity, and for the benefit of the board, I did have a conversation with staff about that, and that would be something that we pursue if it is available. I would suggest that the board act in some way this evening. Obviously, if those potential grant dollars come available, then we would use those to, to help finance this. But what is the preference of the board here to give staff some direction about how we want to move forward?
Mr. Chairman, I would move forward a motion to adopt, shoot, which one is it? The, the mid-tier revision, or findings that the, Mr. Edwards has found for us, and that way we can get the turnaround within 48 hours. And then, you know, we can pursue those PEG funds later on and hopefully use those toward lowering the cost.
Sure, so just so I'm hearing your motion correctly, Mr. Atkins, is that a motion to move forward with the recommendation that we would utilize rev.com in the way that's laid out in that memo?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, perfect. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on this item? Perfect, I think it's a winning scenario for us as well as constituents, and excited to have this opportunity should it pass. Further discussion, seeing none, oh, Mr. Lake?
I'm going to assume here that Mr. Yost has been on board with us. I haven't talked to him, but.
Sure, my conversations with Mr. Edwards were that he involved others on the staff, including Mr. Yost and other staff members, as part of his exploratory, and that they are in support of it. Further questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote on the motion, which is to move forward with the recommendation in the memo before us to utilize rev.com to provide closed captioning services for public videos of school board meetings. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Wonderful, we'll move forward with that. Next, we'll move to new business, finance committee. Mr. Hester?
Yes, Mr. Monk. Let's see, the finance committee met on February 17th, 2022. The finance committee met at the Frederick County Public Schools Administration Building on February 17th. The meeting was called to order at 4:30 PM, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Mrs. Anderson reviewed the finance committee meeting norms and provided responses to the questions Mr. Monk and Mr. Comstock submitted following the finance committee meeting held on February 10th. The questions involve the proposed 5% salary increase, pupil-teacher ratios, certifications held by maintenance technicians, learning centers at the elementary school level, and the proposed upgrades for the transition specialist and the work-based learning coordinator. Mr. Bach then reviewed the projects on the capital asset plan, CAP, that were started and/or completed in FY21, as well as the projects of the CAP that have been started in FY22. He also reviewed the schools' divisions' financial funds, which support the CAP. Mr. Christman reviewed the benefits of the, of the cap, the process used to prioritize projects within the cap, the tools used to help estimate project costs, the preventative maintenance projects funded in FY23, the asset replacement projects which are all, which are included in the superintendent's proposed FY23 budget, as well as the status of the projects in FY22 cap that have started. The committee also reviewed its upcoming meeting schedule and the topics that will be discussed. Additional details regarding the information covered at the meeting, or committee meeting, are included in the minutes provided to board members. Are there any questions from board members about information shared at the finance committee meeting held on February 17th? If there are none, we did have one action item that came out of the February 17th meeting. Recommend approval of the minutes from the finance committee meeting held on February 17th, 2022.
We have a motion to approve the finance committee meeting minutes. As a committee, there's no need for a second. Any discussion about the minutes that are presented for the February 17th meeting? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote on those minutes. All in favor of approval of those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those minutes pass. Mr. Hester, finance committee meeting for February 23rd?
Yes, we did meet on the 23rd, but before I go into the minutes, I did, this was our last meeting of the finance committee, committee before we are bringing forth the proposed budget. I just wanted to say a couple things. I want to thank Mrs. Camery and Mrs. Anderson for the hard work that you, you ladies did during the process this year. I want to thank Mr., or Dr. Savine and staff for all the hard work that went into even getting to discussions around the budget. You know, we dug down into this. I mean, we, we nickpicked it, and, you know, I want to thank the, the committee for the last month, actually over a month now, that we've had weekly meetings discussing all the information. The information from each meeting was sent out to each board member after the meetings were done, and that information was also posted online for constituents to look at. Also want to thank Mr. Monk, who was technically not on the committee, but was at every meeting and, you know, asked some very great questions and was a part of the entire process. So with that said, there, before I get started with the minutes and going forward with that, I did want, I did ask Mrs. Camery to put together a little presentation to state where we've come, and there were a couple of questions from the last meeting from Mr. Monk that we would like to address prior to going over the minutes and the action items.
Thank you, Mr. Hester and members of the board. We do, as we've done in all finance committee meetings, we've always started out with any kind of board questions and answers. So we thought this would be a good time. We did receive some questions from Mr. Monk yesterday, so we wanted to get those up here in case you want to consider those, or all of you consider those in your decision tonight. So what were those questions? The first one was, "What would be the cost of three teacher-type positions, one at each high school, that could work with CTE and work-based learning coordinator initiatives?" And that cost for a 200-day contract is $225,000. "What is the cost of including the speech pathologist and the same $6,000 bonus of special education teachers?" That cost is $131,000. "What are the cost savings for changing special education teacher 7,000 new scale initiative to 6,000 and the assistance from 3,500 to 2,500?" And that savings would be $351,200. He also asked, "What is the cost savings that could be applied to other needs from changing the 5% salary increase for the administrative scale to 1.5%?" Same question for a change to 2%. And would this change cause a loss of state funding for our other scales salary initiative, and if so, why and how could this be remediated? The superintendent's proposal was for a full 5% across the board. To reduce the administrative scale from 5% to 1.5% would reduce this proposed budget by $486,700, and from five down to two would be $486,600. I'd also like to go ahead and add this one in to Mr. Monk. He did ask today if we changed it from five down to three, what it would be. So you, that is not on the screen, but that would be $312,400. This change does not impact the state dollars we would receive for all other scales. However, it would reduce some, because administrators are SOQ-funded, and that is part of the salary initiative from the state. "What would the savings of items three and four offset the increase, or would the savings, I'm sorry, of items three and four offset the increased expenses of items one and two?" And the answer is yes. The cost of items one and two are $356,000. The savings from three and four are $897,900, or $819,800, depending on if you were looking at the 1.5 or the two. "What would be the cost savings for changing the special education teacher 7,000 new scale initiative to a simple 7,000 retention bonus?" And that savings is $190,000. "And what would be the cost savings for changing the special education instructional assistance 3,500 new scale initiative to a simple 3,500 retention bonus?" And that would be $74,000. Mr. Monk kept us busy, so here's the next question. "What would be the cost savings for changing the special education teacher 6,000 new scale initiative to a simple 6,000 retention bonus?" And that savings is $163,000. "What would be the cost savings for changing the special education instructional assistance 2,500 new scale initiative to a simple 2,500 retention bonus?" And that savings, $53,000. "What would be the cost of an employee childcare center similar to the employee clinic?" At this time, you can understand why we wouldn't be able to answer that. I know that's something Mrs. Wrightholm would love to do, and she has talked about it in the past, but until we start seeking that, we wouldn't have that number. And lastly, what would be the cost of longevity retention bonuses would be for employees with 20 or more years of experience on the FCPS on all the scales minus the administrators? In addition, 1.5, and that cost would be $318,000.
Thank you, Ms. Camery. Just want to thank you for getting answers to those questions. And I did, to clarify on number four, those dollars you provide would be, you saying we'll reduce the proposed budget, would that be a savings?
Yes.
That we could utilize? Okay, thank you so much.
So I thought it might help audiences, to our audience and those at home who are watching, if they're still watching, to look at the timeline on our proposed budget. The superintendent came out and proposed his budget on February 1st. The superintendent came out and proposed his budget on February 1st. The FY23 operating fund request on the Board of Supervisors this year is $2.4 million than, less than what it was last year. Before the superintendent came out, he had already cut $7 million from the requests from schools and departments. And the PowerPoint for the superintendent's when he presented on February 1st, that was the very next morning sent down to the Board of Supervisors so that they would have and know what was in his proposal, along with the script, so that they would understand what the slides meant. The school board finance committee meeting has been, they've been meeting since February 3rd to discuss the budget requests in great detail. As you can tell from Mr. Monk's questions, those are just the tip of the iceberg and you can ask Mr. Comstock about that if you like, as he knows he is the king of questions and we do try to adhere and answer those questions. All finance meeting handouts that someone referred to earlier today about being in the notebook, saying that that would help citizens understand, that is always put in the next day out on our budget website under finance. So it's finance, budget, and you see every handout that each school board member received at the finance committee meeting. The adoption of the school board proposed budget is scheduled for tonight, so we hope that we can land there tonight. And once you adopt your budget, then we are able to send it downtown to the Board of Supervisors by category. We cannot do that until you adopt that budget. So I know there is a Board of Supervisor who keeps requesting that, but we don't have anything to send until you land. And once you do that, it'll take us a couple days. Our hope is to have it down to them by category early next week. So what was in that proposal? The operating fund, the superintendent asked for 4.6 additional funds, none in debt service, but there would be some additional funds there that we are asking to have it transferred to the capital projects fund of $867,000. And the request for the capital projects funds is 1.3, making it 5.9 million in additional funds for all three of these funds listed here. So what was in it? So I'm gonna try to do this quickly because I realize that it's a lot of information on one slide, but there's a lot of things for the salary initiative that is in here. The superintendent had proposed a 5% salary initiative across the board for all pay tables. He had also requested an additional enhancement on the nurses' pay table, so besides the 5%, nurses would get an additional 2.5. He asked for the pay differential for special ed teachers and behavioral specialists of $7,000 to be over that of the general ed teachers, as well as a pay differential for special ed instructional and behavioral assistance to be 3,500 over general instructional assistance. He asked to extend the instructional assistance contracts by two days for professional learning. Also, the high school special ed department chairs from 10 to 11 months. Extend counselors from 10 to 11 months. Upgrade work-based learning and transition specialist positions. Extend the contract for the transition specialists. Start the grow our own FCPS graduate initiative. And $1,700 supplement to instructional assistance with a four-year degree. The 55 positions that were in his budget, 29 were teachers, 20 were kindergarten instructional assistants. There was a teacher and instructional assistant at Jordan Springs for their learning center, a teacher instructional assistant at the behavioral support center at Ailer, a band instructional assistant at Shorando, and a facilities technician. There was also two replacement buses. We need 13 per year. We have two currently that are recurring in the operating. This would give us four if this is approved. And this gives the overview of what happened at the last finance committee meeting, Mr. Hester, what had come out of there, so I'll just read that real quick, even though that was the finance recommendation. So the finance committee had recommended to adjust the superintendent's proposed budget to change pay differentials to include speech-language pathologists without increasing the overall budget cost. And to do that, it would be, we would have to reduce that pay differential from 7,000 down to 6,000. And for the assistants, it would be 3,500 down to 3,000. The other fund that's in here that we haven't seen any changes that have been recommended, here's the list and I'm not going to go through all those, but that's for the capital projects fund. This request was where the debt service would be transferred into this fund, along with an additional $1.3 million from the Board of Supervisors. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Camery. The finance meeting did meet on February 23rd, 2022. The finance committee met at the Frederick County Public Schools Administration Building on February 23rd. The meeting was called to order at 4:30 and a copy of the minutes was provided to each board member. During the meeting, Mrs. Camery reviewed the transportation department request included in the superintendent's proposed FY23 budget, as well as information regarding the debt service fund and the proposed transfer to the capital projects fund included in the superintendent's budget proposal. Staff responded to questions regarding the proposed special education pay differential, the pay scale of speech-language pathologists, and the local requirements to receive the state's share of funding for the proposed salary increase included in the governor's proposed budget. The committee then suggested that proposed base pay increase for special education teachers and behavioral specialists, along with the behavior instructional assistance and special education instructional assistance, be adjusted so that speech-language pathologists be included on a new pay scale, which would include the same increase in base pay offered to special education teachers and behavioral specialists. Mr. Monk suggests, suggested three positions be added to serve at the high school level, one at each high school as a career and technical education teacher, half-time and as a workforce development coordinator, half-time. The suggested positions would be in addition to upgrading the work-based learning coordinator to the professional scale. The committee decided to cancel its meeting scheduled for February 24th, 2022, and the meeting adjourned at 5:47 PM. Additional details regarding the information covered at the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Are there any questions from board members about information shared at the finance committee meeting held on February 23rd? If there are none, we did have several action items that came out of that. The first one, recommend approval of the superintendent's proposed budget for FY23, but adjust the proposed base pay increases for special education teachers and behavioral specialists, as well as special education instructional assistance and behavioral instructional assistance, so that speech-language pathologists be included on a new pay scale, which includes the same increase in base pay offered to special education teachers.
All right, we have a motion before us.
Hang on a second.
Mr. Lekel seconded that motion before us, so, and now would be the time for discussion of the motion, which is to approve the superintendent's proposed budget with the adjustments that Mr. Comstock referenced. Or Mr. Hester referenced, excuse me. Comments from the board?
The...
Mrs. White.
Across the board, is that, would you include Dr. Savine?
Mrs. Camery.
He's already got a raise, I mean, I'm thinking he doesn't need another one.
Dr. Savine is under contract that the board has issued, so we would follow what the language is in the contract itself. So I think what the language usually says is he gets the same percentage increase as the teacher, teacher scale does.
Other questions or comments from the board or amendments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Atkins.
So as far as the budget goes, I want to thank the finance committee, you guys just put in a lot of work. You know, I was able to attend the last one. I had the COVID for the first couple, but I, you know, Ms. Camery, you put a lot together in a short amount of time. You know, I am all about getting this budget through, but with some caveats. You know, I don't agree with the way the Board of Supervisors is trying to handle a lot of this and threatening to cut funds, but I do understand their dilemma. They do want transparency in the budget and if we can get together and work as a community to provide that, I think, you know, that's going to go a long way to bring both boards together and let the community heal a little bit. As far as the proposed budget, something that has been bothering me, and I've brought it up with Mr. Comstock, is the step increase. We have failed our teachers by not giving them the step increases that they were owed for a long time. And there is no mention of trying to get that in place. If, if we can't get that going on this budget, I would like for us to, you know, make it a priority on one of our future budgets. I'm glad we could include more of our special ed teachers, you know, as far as lowering that pay amount, but, you know, spreading it out further. You know, they do a lot and with a lot of stuff we've seen with masks, we are going to need a lot of speech pathologists. So, you know, and I've got to agree with Ms. Martin. You know, I don't really think with, to what Mr. Schaefer said, with our lower test scores in math and science and some of our other areas that we're kind of failing in, you know, I really can't stand behind giving Dr. Savine a 5% increase when he's already had $50,000. You can shear a sheep many times, but you can skin him only once. So I can't get behind this budget. Yes, I think we should be giving it to the teachers, but that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Mr. Comstock.
Mr. Chairman, I thank you, Mr. Atkins, for, for the way you prefaced that in your opening comments. I do look forward to a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors. It's necessary. We need to, we rely on them for our funding. We need to work collaboratively with them because we, as a school division, we have needs and the only way that we can meet those needs is by having a good working relationship and good dialogue with that board. So I look forward to hopefully meeting with them next week and I appreciate those comments. I also appreciate the comments and just for clarity for, for maybe the rest of the board who isn't aware and maybe even the public. I think what Mr. Atkins was referring to is there are several steps on all of our pay scales, not just our teacher scales, that are doubled up where years of experience don't necessarily equate to a raise. So, you know, it takes people a long time, longer than many other school divisions, to actually reach some of those higher areas on our pay scales. And so I appreciate Mr. Atkins recognizing that and bringing that up as a point. Mrs. Camery knows that that's a big one for me. I ask and ask and ask about that one a lot. Unfortunately, we had to do it at the time because we had to make major cuts in order to get by, and so now it's one of those things that's very costly to undo. But I agree and I, I want to stress to administration and Dr. Savine that we would like to see some kind of action plan for how to get out of that over maybe a five or 10-year period. How do we climb out of that? Because I do think it's a necessary step. But just in general, with the budget, we had a lot of people, a lot of citizens comment this evening and I'm appreciative for them and a theme that I heard several times was that our staff, both teachers and all of our staff are the heart of what we do, the center of what we do, the most important people, you know, in this division. And I agree with all of those things and I'm very much behind this budget in that regard. Our people need, our people need these raises and so, you know, I'm in full support of, of those raises and of getting our people what they deserve. There's, there's a lot of talk about, I guess, cuts. And so just to maybe give people some consideration, the largest part of our budget is people. So when we're talking about cuts, we're talking about either cutting positions or cutting pay that we're giving to those people. So just, just want to throw that out there. I think that our people deserve more than we're already giving them and I'm very appreciative for all of our people at all levels. And I think that's all for now. I'll probably have more later, but...
Thank you, and I don't want to put you on the spot, Ms. Camery or Ms. Anderson, but I believe that number, when we referenced it last year, and then I think it was also referenced in one of our first budget meetings, where that pay scale adjustment was 4 million plus, somewhere around there. Seeing a shake, okay, thank you. Other comments from members of the board about the item before us, the recommendation for approval of the proposed budget as presented? I'm sorry, this is, thank you, Mr. Callahan. We've, the proposed budget is around 226, I think, and now we're focusing on adopting that as it's presented. Let me look here. Due to, to, the subtitul of the operating budget proposal is 217, 674, 782. That's presented. I'll share that I, I want to be very clear about my support for the initiatives of our teachers. I've said this multiple times and maybe only CTE I've talked about more than teacher, education being a people business, so appreciate that and appreciate that coming out of our budget work session back in November and seeing that reflected here, especially in some of those high-needs areas of special education and speech-language pathology. I also wanted to clear up, I heard a reference earlier this evening about my support for teacher aides and want to clear up any misinformation that might be out there that I don't support those teacher aide positions. I think that, you know, aides, instructional assistants are really valuable to our school system. It's a reality of where those fit within budget and I think this year as this proposed budget, I think that's a vital asset for us, especially in our kindergarteners there to get to them to that level. Also, you might have seen in my questions there, I think as we move forward, the idea of a retention bonus for our 20-plus-year staff is something that would be valuable for us, as we know that many of our teachers are leaving at that point, whether it be for another profession, whether that be retirement or other things, so kind of a retention idea there. The childcare center similar to our employee clinic, that's worked out well for us, and I think if we can get our employees involved, not only in their healthcare, but their childcare and their role, then that provides more incentive to stay as well. Mr. Hester, you mentioned, that I brought up in our finance committee meeting the other week, about potential positions that I feel strongly about. I'm a big supporter of our current technical education program. I think it was mentioned earlier that we have, maybe it was Dr. Lamont, I mentioned it being a strong, something that we're proud of in our division and I agree with that. I think there's some opportunities for us to make other divisions even more envious of the work that we do and as we create a pipeline, pipeline from students to the workplace, giving them opportunities to connect with business and industry in our community, to see what roles and positions are out there, see what they like, what they don't like, have those hands-on experiences is really valuable. And our current staff in the CTE department is doing a tremendous job, but they've got a lot to do and I believe that they could really do so much more if we provide some additional support to them as liaisons there. So in a moment, I'll make a motion that we amend our budget to add those positions in. Also want to speak to the percentage salary there of Dr. Savine. I know last time we were brought up his contract, I was the only member that voted against that and that was nothing against Dr. Savine, it was more of a conversation around that adjustment and would agree that I don't support an additional salary increase at this time. That's something that we could talk about in a future contract negotiation with Dr. Savine. So with that, I would move that we amend the proposed budget to adjust the salary scale, the administrative salary scale, such that it would offset the additional cost of three CTE positions. So it's not necessarily a 3%, but whatever that percentage is that would offset those three CTE positions. And my assumption would be that would be somewhere around three, it would reduce that to somewhere around 3% a little above. So again, my motion is that we would adjust our administrative salary scale to increase that salary to somewhere around 3%, whatever it is to offset three additional professional CTE positions. So right now, we're just voting on the administrative salary if there is a second.
Second.
So motion's been made and seconded that we adjust our administrative salary scale to offset a potential of three positions for CTE. We're not voting on those positions now, but just on that salary scale offsetting.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Comstock.
Just, thank you, sorry. Just for clarity for the board and for the public, your motion, there was a, in Dr. Savine's proposed budget, there was a flat 5% for all employees. Your motion is such that the administrator scale only would be adjusted and reduced just enough to be... enough to be able to pick up those CTE positions at a cost of, I believe it was $225,000, and that would likely equate to three or three and a half percent instead of 5% on the administrator scale.
Yep, so that's correct. Only impacting, I think there's 113 administrators in that scale. I don't, I'd have to look at the number there, but only impacting those. So our teachers, aides, bus drivers, nurses, all of that would be at that 5% recommended Other comments or questions from the board?
Yes, Mr.
Mr. Hester.
I would like to say a couple of things. I am opposed to dropping the, the 5% across the board. Our administration have done tremendous things over the last two years, and every single person in this county deserves the 5% raise. Those of you that are talking about Dr. Savine's salary, you know darn well that that was contract negotiations behind.
Excuse me.
And you guys know how we paid for that. And I'll tell the community right here and now, one penny, not one penny extra was paid outside of, of how we took care of that. So I will say that to support Dr. Savine. But you guys know that that information was taken and discussed behind enclosed session and know how that was handled. So Dr. Savine and every single administrator in the, in the school system does deserve the 5% raise. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll just echo that. Administrators, they rise up through the ranks, and we have an administrator sitting in the room tonight who is responsible for 1,600 kids every day and 180 staff employees. Administrators leave too. They look for jobs too. And Mrs. Camery, would you just remind us that as we read the language from Richmond, there was language in there about you have to accept across the board, right? Or else you start to, the scale starts to slide, or we, we're only qualified for a certain range of monies. Does this discussion bring that into play?
Yeah. What he's referring to is the state is funding SOQ-funded positions of 5%, of which was in the governor's budget. Because some administrators do fall under SOQ, we would be turning some state dollars back if we roll it back from five down to three.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you. So I too will be opposed to any change in the administrative scale.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Lake. And I want to be very clear, my motion is not a reflection of the work that our administrators do in any way. I think it's just as we look at those numbers, a 5% increase is very different on 100,000 versus 46,000. So that, that's the only rationale for that, that I, has nothing to do with the work that our administrators have done and is not a reflection of that. It's just, I feel like it is more equitable to provide it in that way. Further discussion on the amendment to adjust the administrator scale as proposed?
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that sentiment and, and kind of the, the explanation and backstory with that in, in terms of, you know, equating the percentage of 5% flat across the board looks very different for someone who makes $100,000 a year versus someone who's making $20,000 a year. And so I definitely understand where you're coming from there. And also in talking about the positions that, that this proposal, that this proposed amendment would create, I believe it directly aligns with Inspire 2025, and I believe it, it shows the community and it shows, I don't know, I believe it shows the community that, that we are interested in providing those meaningful opportunities for our students. So while at the same time recognizing our administrators, it's not saying that we want to give our administrators no raise, a 3% or 3.5% or whatever it equates to will still likely end up to be just as much or possibly more than what our lower scales are getting. So I believe it still recognizes and appreciates them while also allowing us as a board to kind of further inspire 2025 and the vision of that. So I, I am in support of this amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Comstock. Additional comments from board members on the amendment? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote on the amendment as proposed, which is to adjust our salary initiative to, for just the administrator scale to offset the cost of a potential of three CT positions. All in favor of doing so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, we kind of have a mixed bag there, so I'll move to a roll call vote on that. Mr. Lake?
No.
Ms., Mrs. White?
No.
Ms. Martin? Mr. Comstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
No.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so that will pass. Those administrator salaries have been adjusted. With that, kind of a sister motion there, my next motion would be to amend our budget to add those three CTE positions that I referenced, that would be at the high school level, to promote current technical education, work-based learning, and continue our Inspire 2025 mission that we have laid out before us. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded. Discussion on that amendment?
I support the CTE positions, but I would also like to add that our early learners have suffered the most from this pandemic, and it's very, very important to increase and expand our pre-K program. So I would like to have something considered where we add an additional pre-K.
Thank you, Mrs. White. Other comments, Mr. Comstock?
I'm in agreement with, with that. I think pre-K is definitely an area of need. Is this something that, do we need to address the motion before us before doing that one? Or should we? Okay.
So the, the motion is about the three CT positions. We may have an additional motion, it sounds like, coming down the road. Any discussion on those additional positions related to current technical education?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Comstock.
Just for maybe some backstory, again, for the rest of the board and for the citizens present, at these finance committee meetings, a lot of questions do get asked, and this specific position or the idea of this position was discussed, and it was indicated by administration that this would be an area of need and a much-needed position. So this hasn't just been pulled out of the air as a willy-nilly idea, hey, we're going to add some CTE positions. So anyways, that would be.
Appreciate the context, Mr. Comstock. I'm not the best at providing that, but that is true. I believe there was a support of the positions. It's just a matter of priority there. Spoke also with Dr. Savine, and I think he's in support of those positions. It's just a matter of where those fell on the priority of the proposed budget. But I do think this could be meaningful for our students, but also provide some great connection to our community and those business and industry leaders that we have in that community to provide some real experiential learning opportunities for our students. Additional comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I am in full support of the CTE additional slots. I know that a lot of the students out there trying to get into the community, college isn't for everybody, wasn't for me when I first got out. So I, you know, I, I went into, you know, the military, but a lot of folks that I grew up with went into the trades and probably debt-free and, and living, living life right. So, you know, I think it, you know, puts a different way of learning on for other kids by, you know, getting hands-on experience, and I appreciate all that you do with the CTE program. So yes, it's got my 100% support.
Thank you. Additional comments before we move to a vote?
Would we be able to table this until we have more information and data to see how we can provide for both the CTE positions and a pre-K expansion?
We can't, yep, so we can move to table. I'll, I'll share that I think the hope would be that we could get this information to the Board of Supervisors as soon as possible, just given that their budget timeline. I don't know, Mr. Hester or Ms. Camery, do you want to speak to that?
Mr. Monk, I'll speak up. The, the desire is to land tonight. It needs to be downtown by the 11th, and any tabling would require us to have an additional finance meeting and a special meeting called for the school board. And that would probably, the finance meeting would probably take place this Thursday, and we would have to have an emergency meeting no later than Monday.
Would it be difficult to add one of them later?
Oh, I'm sorry, to, to, you adopt tonight and then later on down the path to make some changes?
Right. In other words, say adopt the, whatever it's called, the one for the students going out into the world, and then
CTE.
As soon as we can, do the pre-K.
Yeah, just let me, let me make sure. We, because it's a categorical change, those two things would be a categorical change. So we would, we could send it down for public hearing, but then based on what you may get from the Board of Supervisors, you may be coming back and adjusting anyway. So you could address it at that point in time as well.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Any other comments from the board before we move to a vote on the amendment? Wonderful. So the amendment before us, just as a reminder, is to add those three full-time current technical education liaison-type positions, one at each of our high schools to serve our students and community. It's been made and seconded. All in, we'll actually do a roll call vote just for ease here. Mr. Atkins?
Aye.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Mr. Comstock?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Lake?
Yes.
And the chair votes aye, and so that passes. We now have the amended adoption. Before us, other amendments or proposals from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Atkins.
Can I make that amendment to not include Dr. Savine on that, you know, that across the board raise?
Ms., thank you, Mr. Atkins. I spoke with legal counsel this afternoon about that and a number of other topics, but Mrs. Camery, I think, alluded to potential language in the contract, and I don't know, I don't know what that shares, to be honest about that. Would there be a, Ms. Camery, would there be an opportunity to vote on that this evening contingent upon its allowable of the contract? Would that be appropriate motion so that we're not in conflict of the, I want to be sure that this board is not in conflict of any contract that we have existing?
I'm 99.9% sure your contract with him states he gets the same increase as teachers because it's still in the active contract.
Okay. So to, to answer that question then, Mr. Atkins, it sounds like our contractual obligations are that it would be the same as that teacher.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Additional comments or amendments to the proposed budget that has been amended to include a reduction of the administrator scale to whatever it would be to offset those three additional CT positions? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote on the budget as a whole that is amended. It is before us. Let me fire up my computer again so that everyone is clear what we're voting on. All right, so approval of the superintendent's proposed budget for FY23 with the adjustment of the proposed base pay increases for special education teachers and behavioral specialists, as well as special education instructional assistants and behavior instructional assistants, so that speech language pathologist be included on a new pay scale, which includes the same increase in base pay offered to special education teachers, and that the administrative salary be reduced so that it would support the addition of three current technical education liaison-type positions, one at each high school. And that is the motion before us. It's been made, properly seconded, and we will proceed to a vote if there's no further discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Comstock.
Got a couple more things to say.
Okay.
Sorry. There had been some discussion about that additional pre-K position, and in Dr. Savine's proposed budget in the area of, still areas of need, one of the items he had cut was that position. I, I do think it's an important need, and I would like to see it added at some point when the time is right. There were, I did ask these questions at the finance committee meeting, and Dr. Angelo spoke to them and just referenced that, you know, there's more to it than just adding the funds for the position. We need to make sure we have adequate, adequate space and the appropriate playground and, and things like that. So while I do very much see this as a need and want to add that position, I want to make sure we do it when we have everything right. And then kind of going off of that, we had a kindergarten teacher earlier, and I spent a little time as a kindergarten teacher and a first grade teacher myself, and she referenced kindergarten as herding cats. My aide, I fondly remember her, but she, she always said we were herding barn cats. That's the way she referred to it, and it's very true. And that year, my last year in the classroom, I was a kindergarten teacher, and we were half-day and had 25 students in each session, half-day, and I was so blessed to have that full-time aide in my class. We wouldn't have been able to meet the needs of those kids without that. So I, I am very grateful to see this and very grateful for Dr. Savine for including this and recognizing this need in our earliest learners, because while we might not have the full support that we need in the pre-K realm, at least we can do a better job of, of helping our, our students as they enter kindergarten. So I just wanted to throw that out there, and I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Comstock. Any other final comments before we move to a vote? All right. Forget which way we went last time, so we'll just start off with Mr. Lake.
Yeah. Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Comstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
No.
And Mr., the chair votes yes, so the budget passes, and we'll move that on to the Board of Supervisors. The next item on our agenda is the Buildings and Grounds Committee report. Mr. Comstock?
No. You thought you were done with me. The Buildings and Grounds Committee met in the Dr. Melton F. Wright Board Meeting Room on February 22nd. The meeting was called to order at 4:32 PM, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During that meeting, Mr. Bach updated the committee on the gym walls at James Wood High School.
If we could keep the noise down, thank you, I appreciate it.
And the work that is underway to address concerns about the ability of the east and west walls of the auxiliary and main gyms to bear loads placed upon them, particularly wind loads. Correcting the issues is expected to cost about $530,000, which will be incorporated into the budget for the James Wood High School renovations and additions. Both gyms are expected to be reopened by the start of the 2022-2023 school year. Mr. Bach also informed the committee of plans to provide wayfinding and signage for Frederick County Middle School and Gainesboro Elementary School. It's anticipated the cost of the signage will be covered by position savings within the current year's operating budget. Finally, Mr. Bach reported the school division has revisited the idea of commissioning a study to determine the feasibility of repurposing the former Robert E. Ailer Middle School and determined that such a study is not necessary. This is because a study of the former Ailer Middle School completed by OWPR Architects and Engineers in 2018 provided the information necessary to determine if renovating that facility to serve as an academy was feasible. Mr. Bach added that from a fiscal standpoint, it doesn't seem feasible to renovate this facility for use as a high school academy. At the conclusion of the meeting, the committee was informed that the James Wood High School Renovations and Additions Project is now in the construction documents phase, and staff will provide an overview of the project design to the committee at a future meeting. Additional details regarding the information reviewed at this committee meeting are included in the information provided to board members. Do board members have any questions about what was covered at the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting held on February 22nd? Seeing none, we, oh, yes, ma'am.
Why is, what's wrong with the building that it, that it's so shabby that it can't be renovated?
I can take that one. So Ms. Martin, at that meeting, we discussed wind load on a wall.
Mr., Mr. Atkins, Ms. White is referencing the, Ms. Martin is referencing the old Ailer Middle School.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And kind of the...
When, when determining, Ms. Martin, and if anyone else wants to jump in, feel free, but when determining that it was necessary to, to build the new replacement Ailer Middle School, a feasibility study was done at that time, and there's a general rule of thumb that if the cost to renovate is going to exceed 75% of the cost of a new building, then it, it would not be worth it to renovate said building. Specifically, that building, a majority, if I recall correctly, a majority of the internal walls are load-bearing walls. And so the cost to redesign and, and make it an adequate And so the cost to redesign and, and make it an adequate facility for an academy would just be very, very costly, so. So we have one motion coming out of the Buildings and Grounds Committee, and that is that I reckon I move to approve the minutes from the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting held on February 22nd, 2022.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the minutes from the Building and Grounds Committee meeting held on February 22nd. Seeing no discussion, proceed to vote. All in favor approving the minutes as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Mr. Hester, I think we skipped over.
Yes, Mr. Monk, I apologize. There was one additional action item that came out of the February 23rd, 2022 meeting, and that was to recommend approval of the minutes from the Finance Committee meeting held on February 23rd, 2022.
Do we have a?
Second.
All right, motion's been made and properly seconded to approve the minutes for the Finance Committee meeting held on February 23rd, 2022. Seeing no discussion, proceed to vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Those minutes are approved. Next item on our agenda is the self-certification for pre-Labor Day opening of the 2022-2023 school year. Mrs. Rittenhour?
Yes, thank you. In your board packet, you should have received the memorandum from Mr. Bach through Dr. Savine regarding pre-Labor Day opening. It's a self-certifying document that would allow us to start. We qualify to start before Labor Day, so just an opportunity to review that memorandum, and hopefully we can self-certify. Also, in addition, just back to the comment regarding the old Ailer, 85% of the walls were load-bearing in that structure, so it would be quite costly to, to replace. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mrs. Rittenhour, I'm correct in saying that this is something that we would need to do to approve and self-certify if we wanted to have school before Labor Day of next year?
Correct. Per the Code of Virginia, if you agree in self-certify because we do qualify based on Virginia Code, then our first day of school could be prior to Labor Day.
Any questions for Mrs. Rittenhour or others about the self-certification? All right, do we have a motion to self-certify?
So moved.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second? Motion's been made and properly seconded that we self-certify for pre-Labor Day opening for the 2022-2023 school year. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have met that requirement. Proclamation of National School Breakfast Week, which is March the 7th through the 11th of 2022, that was included in our consent agenda. Just want to share that our school board celebrates that and appreciate the work that all of our school nutrition professionals do, day in and day outs, in providing healthy and nutritious meals for our students. With that, we'll move to item H, board member comments. Are there any?
Mr. Monk?
Mr. Hester?
I have a couple of things. Over the last couple of weeks, it's really been awesome, just, I, I know we hit on some of the sporting events that have been going on recently. You know, everything from swimming to basketball to, we've got teams down at Liberty today for indoor track, and it's just been really cool to see the success that our student athletes have had with that and, you know, just the excitement that it brings for the individual, but also the school. So I just wanted to give a huge congratulations out to all the student athletes out there. I also want to talk to the teachers that have come and, and, you know, other employees from the division. I want to thank you guys. It's not, not too often that we get a group of teachers in the room. Thank you, guys, for everything you've done over the past couple of years. I know it's been hard. You know, those that have been working behind the scenes in the finance department here, you know, teachers, everybody. It, it really has been a team effort. And I just wanted to specifically talk to you, you folks, just because you did take the time to come up, come out and show up tonight. So I, I really appreciate you, and I appreciate all teachers and staff, that, the amount of work and sacrifice that they've provided over the last couple of years. Thank you, guys, for providing the best education that we can for our Frederick County students. Thank you, Mr. Monk.
Thank you, Mr. Hester. Additional board member comments, are there any? Mr. Atkins?
So I just wanted to address a couple of things that came up from my constituents when they stated they were from Shawnee District. Ms. Carter brought up, you know, her child being segregated and then not being able to, you know, participate and then kind of giving it, getting a test and, and, you know, being unprepared and not educated for it. We'll look into that, that I'm going to make that publicly known, that I'm going to take a personal interest in that, and I will send it up through the right channels. Mr. Callahan, you stated to Mr. Hester that, you know, he should make an apology. I don't need an apology. He has a First Amendment right to speak however he wants. As far as, I didn't get your last name, Max, you brought forth a lot of stuff on the budget, and thank you, that, that's an awesome Excel spreadsheet you did there, and a lot of work went in that. I appreciate that. I think she already left, but Ms. Hamner with the, the kids wanting to play baseball, that was an awesome presentation by some of our young students. And I'd, I'd love to get something in there like that. I'd like to see us be able to work that in the budget as well. And then I know that we talked about getting new subs and all that, kind of relieves some stress off of our teachers. Once again, I'm going to plug for subs. Please, 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 reach out and, you know, be part of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Additional comments? I'll just share, Mr. Hester, I completely agree. Sporting events are definitely one way to unite our community and enjoy those. I think the only way in which our community was divided in those sporting events was when Shirando, the ladies played, the lady pioneers of Millbrook, there's a little division there, but things are going well and excited about the success of those teams and potential future success as well. Want to comment that our board has worked over the past few days to set aside some time for a joint meeting with the board of supervisors, and we've sent over a proposed time to them, which I believe, based upon a few initial conversations with a few members, with the leadership of their board, I believe that will work for them. So looking forward to continuing to further that relationship and advocate for our students as we share our perspective with them and hear their perspective moving forward. All right.
Mr. Chairman, one more.
Mr. Comstock?
I feel like talking tonight. No, just, I, you know, I, I'm appreciative for the budget, and, and I just want to say, you know, I think I can't let the meeting end without saying, we're in the business of people. We have staff, we have teachers, we have people on all levels, and I don't know a single person who's not here for the kids. And so we're here for the children of this community, and, and I appreciate those people. We employ, is it 2,400 people? 23. We employ a lot of people, and we have some of the best that there are. We have some amazing people, and I'm just appreciative for all of you at all levels. And so just wanted to say that before we close out the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Comstock. And so the next process, as Ms. Camery shared, that this proposed budget will go down to our friends at the board of supervisors, and they'll have an opportunity to review it. We'll discuss it. I'm sure there'll be some discussion at our joint meeting, and then they'll provide a funding allocation to us, and then we would come back, depending upon what that looks like, and potentially make adjustments. Is that correct? Perfect. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Made a second, properly seconded to adjourn. All in favor of doing so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. We are adjourned.